...for the playing of the National Anthem.
As we were agreeing when you lead us in the pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the modulable persons, the foundation of your God, the individual, the liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Samuel David Jefferson of Calvary Christian Fellowship to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. O God, we come before you with gratitude, humanity. We thank you for being a righteous judge. You are God of love and peace. We invoke your presence in this room. Your grace, your mercy has brought us safe to another week. We thank you for creating us in your image with dignity and infinite worth. I thank you, God, for choosing these council members for such a time as this. We pray for your wisdom that every matter is before them today will be accomplished with just. Help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears, more than our wounds, and even our accomplishment. May we lean on your everlasting arms today. May your truth be revealed through this governing body. We thank you again for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responder, our hospital staff, and all those who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. Through your son's name, whose perfect law set us free from all our fears. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla Beatty de Akawordornes Green Remy Vice President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion through the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla Beatty de Akawordornes Green Remy Vice President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and we published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to use this time to go around the dais for updates and resolutions from council members, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
One moment. June is Immigrant Heritage Month, where we honor the history of this country and the people who make it the rich, wonderful, and diverse place that it is. America is home to people whose ancestors have been here for thousands of years and home to people from every place on earth. Some people came freely, some came chained by force, some came when famine struck or to flee persecution, and some came to chase dreams that are only possible here in America. We all come from somewhere, but we are all Americans. And this month, we honor the contributions and celebrate the remarkable courage of our nation's immigrants, whose hopes and dreams helped found this country and continue to push us forward today. As a proud daughter of immigrants, I stand in solidarity with the brave individuals protesting in Los Angeles against the cruel and inhumane actions of ICE. These protests are a reflection of the deep pain and outrage felt by communities across the country who have been torn apart by unjust immigration policies. Families belong together, not separated or detained. The fear and trauma inflicted by ICE raids, detentions, and deportations have no place in a country that values freedom and human dignity. We must listen to the voices rising from the streets of Los Angeles and beyond. These protests are not just about opposition. They are a call to action for leaders at every level to defend immigrant rights, to invest in communities rather than criminalize them, and to build a system that treats all people with compassion and respect. I join the call for a just and humane immigration system and commend those standing up peacefully and powerfully to demand change. Council President, I would also like to announce two other locally focused invitations for our community to join us. I held last Thursday in District Eight, Up Next with Lourdes Series, at the Crittenon Center on the East Side. We were able to facilitate discussion about key topics regarding the East Side here directly from constituents. We will do it again on June 11th, this Wednesday, to hear updates and conversations on the South Side. So I hope folks will join me. You'll hear from city departments and take part in breakout discussions on key topics. So that'll be this Wednesday, June 11th, on the South Side at Faces. 12 or 2515 Lockborn Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43207 is the address. You can find a QR code to RSVP on my social media channels and on council's social media channels. And secondly, we are excited to announce that 614 Beautiful applications will open today and close at 5:00 PM on July 7th. These grants are up to $15,000 that will be awarded to create pocket parts, murals, and more. So you can go to the Neighborhood Design Center's website to learn more, and I encourage folks to apply. Thank you. Today is, I know, a tough day. That was a hard turn from my original statement, but I just wanted to ensure that there's a lot of folks in our community that are hurting today, that are fearful today, and I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them, that we saw them, that we know that we are standing in solidarity with them, and at the same time, the work of our communities goes on. And so this was a reflection of that. So I hope that folks will join us so that we can work together to continue to make Columbus a place that is accessible for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beatty.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember de Akar.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few announcements. On the 11th, which is Wednesday, I'm having my Pakistani-American Community Hours. Folks can drop by anytime from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Pakistani-American Community Service Center located at 4501 Refugee Road. A couple of announcements from our military and veterans community. June 12th is Women Veterans Day. It's an opportunity for us to give special recognition to the women who have served in our armed forces. Women have been serving our country going way back to the American Revolution when Deborah Sampson was a soldier. She managed to go for 17 months before she was injured and then had to... Then it was caught when they found out she was a woman, and so she had to leave the military. But she was a soldier. Women have been serving in our armed forces with incredible dignity, doing incredible work, and too often, they have not been recognized. After Vietnam, the women who served in Vietnam, people even denied that they were there. We need to recognize the women who have served our armed forces. So please, on the 12th, think of a woman who has served in our military. You may not even know that they served because women often don't self-reveal that. But please, think of a female veteran. And on the 14th, it is the 250th birthday of the United States Army. So a big shout out to our infantry there who have been serving our country valiantly since 1775. Then my last announcement is regarding deer, which has been in the news very recently. After consulting with the Ohio Department of National Resources and with help of Ohio State University School of Environmental Science, my office, along with President Pro Tem Dorans and the Department of Neighborhoods, has developed a community survey to examine the impact of the whitetail deer population in our city. In addition to collecting residents' general sentiments about deer, the survey will also collect feedback on potential city-led deer management strategies to help us identify practical ways to manage issues associated with the deer living in our communities. The survey is live as of today. It takes five to 10 minutes to complete. It's anonymous, and it will be open through August 27th, 22nd. To take the survey or to learn more, you can visit columbus.gov/deersurvey. If you have any questions about the initiative, you can contact my aide Jacob Dilly at J-A-D-I-L-L-E-Y at columbus.gov. Next, I would like to invite Rachel Hardinbrook and Yolanda Board and their guests to please come to the podium as I read Resolution 0146X-2025 to recognize and honor the Reroute Program for its commitment to healing today's youth for resilient tomorrow. Reroute is a collaborative initiative between Columbus Recreation and Parks and Columbus Public Health, offering resilient-centered services to adolescents aged 12 to 21 who have experienced gun violence or other forms of community trauma. The program provides intentional engagement through mentorship, relationship building, clinical counseling, and essential resource connections, offering youth a comprehensive pathway from crisis stabilization to long-term healing. Tomorrow, Reroute will be celebrating a new class of graduates. That's exciting. Many of whom are with us this evening. And they all willingly join into the referral-based program. They've set goals, and they've achieved personal milestones with the support of Reroute staff. But I would like to turn the floor over to Rachel from Columbus Recreation and Parks Department and Yolanda from Columbus Public Health to talk more about this program and how it positively impacts young people in our community.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember de Akar, Councilmember Green, and members of Columbus City Council. My name is Rachel Hardinbrook, and I am the Recreation Administrative Manager for the Reroute Program. With me, I have Yolanda Board. She is the Program Manager, too, for the Reroute Program. The Reroute Program serves youth 12 through 21 who are at risk of or are currently experiencing community violence. Our team of community clinical counselors, community care assistants, and community interventionists provide trauma-informed counseling, case management, and intervention to youth and their families. We would like to take a moment to recognize the wonderful staff we have standing up here with us today that work with these youth each and every day. Thank you, guys. In 2024, Reroute had the honor of serving 139 youths referred to us by 65 community-based organizations. Our staff engaged with community members at over 100 different community events throughout the city. In 2024, we celebrated our first class of program graduates, and today, we are actively serving 65 youths. Tomorrow, we look forward to celebrating our second graduating class. In Reroute, our mission is to build strong communities, and that starts with our youth. Reroute is about meeting our most vulnerable young people where they are and guiding them towards a brighter future. Reroute is what real collaboration looks like, beginning with the partnership between Columbus Public Health and Columbus Recreation and Parks.
Thank you, Rachel. In the Reroute Program, we work alongside schools, community organizations, and mental health professionals, developing a network of support for each family. When we collaborate like this, we're not just serving our youth. We're showing them that they matter, that they belong, and greater possibilities are ahead of them. We wanted to share a success story with you to illustrate the impact of the Reroute Program. Recently, we referred a young man with a bright future who was a very talented athlete but was on the verge of failing high school. He was unmotivated. He had no sense of self-pride. And he had already been held back in middle school, and he was very quickly on the path to being 20 and enrolled in high school. So the team worked with him to identify his mental health needs and his barriers to success, and he started to slowly develop self-esteem, and he gathered the motivation to graduate for his mother. The journey was rocky and gently paced, and our staff began celebrating small victories, helping him establish his goals, walking alongside him as he chipped away at the tasks in front of him. Well, around a week ago, our staff got to watch this bright young man walk across the stage at his high school graduation. Yeah, right? And he's now able to identify that he is, in fact, proud of himself. So that's a pretty big success to us. This resolution isn't just recognition, it's a reminder. A reminder that when we invest in young people with purpose, care, and coordination, we don't just change individual lives. We strengthen families, neighborhoods, and communities for generations to come. Thank you.
Do any of my... Hold on, there's more. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your work. I mean, one, we know that for young people, you... Just that one person who sees them and believes in them and pours into them. And it's not easy work because I think sometimes youth work is like planting... It's like growing a tree, like an oak tree. It takes a long time before you see that change, and sometimes you don't always feel like you're breaking through, right? And it's those little wins incrementally. You know, I've spent my career being a youth worker, and so this is life-changing for folks, hearing that voice, having that cheerleader, having someone there who's giving them opportunities, helping them see that they have other options is huge. And so you are doing generational work. And so I just want to thank folks for being part of the program, for showing up every day, for showing up for our young people every day, for continuing to invest and believe in them because it makes a world of difference, even if you don't always see that right away. And that story was just proof of that, right? And you'll continue to see that young person's trajectory. So thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do and the work that you'll continue to do.
Any other comments from colleagues? If not, I move for pass it.
The row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla Beatty de Akawordornes Green Remy Vice President Harden.
Passed.
That's all for me, Council President?
Thank you, Councilmember. Congratulations again. Let me go back to Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. I think that she wants to pass one of her resolutions.
I do. I apologize. I need to postpone Resolution 0148X-2025 to June 23rd. So am I sending that back to committee? I can just postpone it? Okay, just postpone it. Thank you.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla Beatty de Akawordornes Green Remy Vice President Harden.
Thank you.
Of course. Press Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. A couple announcements tonight. So this week, the Finance and Governance Committee, with that committee chair Bangston and I, will be hosting a public hearing on proposed legislation which would extend prevailing wage requirements to commercial and industrial construction projects that receive significant city financial investment. This hearing will be held here in council chambers at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, June 11th. Residents can join in person or tune in online at either the city's YouTube or Facebook pages. Any resident seeking to submit testimony should do so at my office by emailing my aide, andymcdonald@columbus.gov by 11:00 AM that day of the hearing. We anticipate taking additional public feedback as that legislation moves forward, so feel free to engage with my office as that legislation is under consideration. My last announcement is just an acknowledgement of Councilmember Remy. It is your birthday. So happy birthday to our colleague, Councilmember Remy. That's all I have this time, Council President.
You stole that from me, Press Pro Tem, but no, that's good. Happy birthday, Remy. Councilmember Green. Birthday boy. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Council President. I am excited to honor the 11 commissioners being proposed for appointment to the Columbus Advisory Commission on Disability Issues, better known as CACTI. Will the appointees and the city's ADA coordinator, Angie Wise, please come to the podium to be recognized while I share a little bit about the commission?
Originally, the Committee on Disability Issues, CACTI, was established in 1999 to advise and make recommendations to the mayor and council about issues involving Columbus residents who are living with disabilities. By codifying CACTI last year, we put their duties and existence into law so that it can exist in perpetuity regardless of who holds a seat on council or who holds the mayor's office. Today, we are taking the next step forward with this work. The 11 individuals standing before us will be the commissioners who represent and advocate for the Columbus residents who live with a disability. They serve to advise city council, the mayor, and city departments on how to best meet the needs of the disability community, advocate for the rights of those with disabilities, promote awareness of disability issues in the community, and recommend strategies to improve accessibility and inclusivity citywide. I would like to congratulate these new commissioners on this amazing achievement and thank them for their service to the community. Angie, would you like to share a few words? And obviously, if any of the commissioners would like to say something, we'd love to hear from them, too.
Yes. Thank you so much, council members. I'm Angie Wise, the city of Columbus ADA Coordinator, and I am proud to stand up here with the new commissioners to the Columbus Advisory Commission on Disability Issues. We are all excited to begin our work together. But I would like to acknowledge past committee members who have really put in the decades of work educating, advocating, and pushing to make the city of Columbus more accessible. It's my pleasure to introduce two of the commissioners, Alexia Kimberling and Justin Simmons.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name's Alexia Kimberling, and this is Justin Simmons. And we wanted to say thank you so much for establishing the commission. We're so grateful to the city's ADA coordinator, Angie Wise, and past commissioners. As we know, in the disability community, every issue is a disability issue. And so disabled voices and perspectives deserve a seat at every table, and we're really excited to work with all of you. I'll pass to Justin to say a few words as well.
Yes. Again, thank you, and we're super honored to be here. And thank you for allowing us to serve the great city of Columbus. We're looking forward to work with the zoning, the parks, and just give us a unique perspective in how we can make the city great. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here and for speaking, and for all of our commissioners who are dedicating their time and commitment to the city of Columbus. We know we are at a pivotal moment in our city where we experience some growth. And with that growth comes different challenges and issues that present itself. As we said in the reception earlier, if we do not have members of the community advocating for specific policies, it's hard for those who do not live in the disability community to ensure that we're making the right policy decisions. And so we're excited for the work that you are going to do for the city of Columbus, and thank you for raising your hand and being willing to serve. Would any of my colleagues like to say any words or questions?
I will, Councilmember. One, thank you for your leadership and stewardness through. But certainly, thank you to the commissioners who raised their hands to step. Both of the commissioners that spoke thanked us. But really, you all are the ones who are going to be doing the work to advise and speak on behalf of so many folks who, for the longest time, may have felt that they did not have direct advocacy and advocates. And so we are very grateful for you. We look forward to taking your advisement. We take it seriously, and we look forward to being partners with you and making sure that Columbus is truly a city for all. So thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Anyone else? With that, I just want to say, can we give them a round of applause again for their tireless commitment? And thank you for being here today. Council President, that's all for me, too.
I just have one announcement, and it's that it's not just Pride Month, but this week, this Saturday, we will celebrate the Pride Parade and Festival, the Stonewall Columbus Pride Parade and Festival. This is one of the largest events that our city holds each year, certainly the largest Pride Parade in the Midwest. And we come together, we celebrate. Pride has always been a protest, and it will bring out good energy. I want folks to know that we will all be there, and we will be a safe and fun experience. I spoke with the Safety Police Department today, and we are... It will be a safe event, so we encourage folks to come down, bring your family, and let's show our pride. With that... Are there any comments by our other election official, City Attorney's Office Auditor? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or a resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have the motion to waive reading of the titles of 38 legislation on tonight's agenda? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla Beatty de Akawordornes Green Remy Vice President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now read to the record the ordinance number of 38 legislation on tonight's agenda.
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 1420 and 1478-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance is 1532 and 1533-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 1267, 1562, and 1612-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 1439-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 1455-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1372 and 1438-2025. Homeless... I'm sorry, Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance 1442-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Would you please read those into the record?
Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance is 1159, 1413, 1487, 1514, 1515-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 1319 and 1497-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 1263, 1320, 1336, 1350, 1351, 1352, 1366, 1392, 1406, and 1456-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 990, 1265, and 1563-2025. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinance 570, 1215, 1311, and 1490-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 1243, 1248, and 1437-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 1367-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1120, 1149, 1268, 1414, 1427, and 1436-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 1354, 1391, 1423, and 1443-2025. Rules and Policy Committee... I'm sorry, actually, appointments from the mayor. We have A107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, and 117-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two speakers on a piece of legislation in the Housing, Homelessness, and Development Committee. Ordinance 1423-2025. The first speaker to come before council is Angela Tampon. Ms. Angela, if you would state your name and if you represent any organization, and you will have three minutes to speak. Welcome to council.
Good evening. My name is Angela Tamponi, and I am appreciative of an opportunity to meet you all tonight. Are you able to hear? Are you able to hear? Regarding the annexation of the 8.6 acres in Franklin Township that is proposed, it's AN24-014, as far as I know, the number that you're all working from. I'm here to ask the council to pause for a spell and to table this for this particular reason. The surrounding property owners were not given a public forum to speak with city council, and we are a very engaged citizenry of property owners surrounding this property. We have over 125 petitioners. We have attended five meetings with the West Scioto Area Commission, and we are all learning our way about being active citizens, participating in this process together with yourselves. We have filled the room, standing room only, in those meetings, and we were not made aware that this meeting today was going to happen for a vote on the annexation. So, we would like to have an opportunity to speak with city council before the annexation vote is made. And I am just one of many people who would like to coalesce our, make our case to you about this annexation because we have other opportunities available for the betterment of our community that we'd like to speak with you about before you make the annexation decision. How am I on time? I really, I think that's pretty much it. We have been very diligent about our work as citizens, and we'd just like to have an opportunity for all of us to communicate with you. And that is all I have to say. Is there more that you want from me, or shall I just exit?
Well, I'm going to hear also, there's a second speaker on this piece, and then I'm going to ask the department, and I know that the applicant is here as well, or the folks representing this piece are here as well. So, just hang tight. I'll, the next speaker to come before council is David Drinkhouse. David, welcome to council.
Esteemed city council members and all others attending this meeting, I'm a second citizen who welcome development but want to learn more. Thank you for this chance to speak about the community I live in and the growth coming. We embrace it, but we want it done responsibly. I just learned of this meeting Sunday. I did not see an email or snail mail if it was sent. I missed it. I've been attending and speaking at five meetings so far at the WSAC, and I'm feeling passionate about upcoming development and hope it comes responsibly to West Scioto. At the last meeting, it was unclear when the annexation would be, and everyone in the audience is when, where, and we thought it was July or June. We didn't know. The WSAC voted no unanimously on this project as is because it's not okay yet. It needs to be revised. So, I'd like to submit written testimony later because I wasn't prepared to do so My question is, that I'm trying to get answered, is the LDG application, its site plan, and its details part of the criteria on whether you'll vote yes or no? Does it matter that it's like insufficient parking? And there's several defects to this project, which I can submit written testimony on. Do those details matter on annexation, or is it just that it's contiguous and that it's less than 500 acres, et cetera? So, I'm very inexperienced at annexation. I would like to learn more, and I'd like to be a responsible voice for the community. But that's my remarks for now, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Drinkhouse. Now, I'm going to ask the director, if you're good, then I'll ask the director to respond to this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
You can go. You can go. Thank you. Director, would you speak to specifically the process? I want to make sure that, and we did allow those two residents to speak today. They just reached out to our office in the last hour or so, and so, I wanted to give them the opportunity to have a public response to this, but tell us about the process, and we'll see how we move forward.
Thank you, President Harden, members of city council. Annexation is a, the annexation process is guided by the Ohio Revised Code. On February 3 of this year, you, city council, approved a service ordinance for this parcel saying that we could service it with water and sewer, we could service it through our refuse collection, and then also service it through public safety, police, and fire. After that, service ordinance was approved, then goes to the county. County commissioners then have the ability to approve the annexation. Based on the type of annexation, since we're not conforming the boundaries of Franklin Township, this parcel remains in Franklin Township after it is annexed into the City of Columbus. Based on that type of annexation, the county commissioners are limited in their ability to approve or deny the annexation. So, they approved that annexation on March 11. This is the final piece of the process where the city decides, and council takes action on whether or not to accept the annexation and put it into the City of Columbus. The second speaker spoke to questions around land use. Annexation isn't a land use discussion. As this piece gets annexed into the City of Columbus, next steps, if there is a use desired, it needs to go through our rezoning process. It sounds like out in the West Scioto, they've already started to have meetings with the developer about what the project might look like. This piece of legislation doesn't, to answer the second speaker's question, that doesn't take into account land use, design, all that in annexation. That will be a process that the developer will need to go through, or the property owner, I'm assuming developer, will need to go through, and then take the council to get the rezoning approved based on that process.
I do have one additional question. First. Thank you, Council President. Director, if you could just clarify, too, with the annexation policy, that this is really driven by the private property owner, whoever the owner is, this isn't something that necessarily the city does. There are unique cases where the city has a vested interest, and we will seek annexation. But our annexation policy, broadly speaking, isn't this aggressive thing that we've once seen before. It is at the applicant's request, which means the property owner, is that correct?
Councilmember Bangston, thank you for the question. That is correct. The applicant, the property owner, has to sign the application for this process and be part of that.
Mr. Drinkhouse, I'm going to ask you to speak to my staff person, Jessica. I am inclined to move this forward. I think this is a perfunctory step in annexation. There's not a piece, there's not a development that we are actually talking about, and so, I did think it was important, though, that the residents had an opportunity to come before council, and that is what we just did. But I'm inclined to keep this on the consent agenda. Okay. Jessica, would you make yourself available to Mr. Drinkhouse? Oh, I apologize. Press, please.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. I just want to say the residents are here, so I chaired the zoning committee. So, it's my understanding that, again, this annexation is connected to a applicant pursuing a rezoning on that property. Once it is annexed, again, there's a process that goes through for an annexation once it in the city. It then gets uniformly zoned into rural district, and then there's a, you can then seek a rezoning from there. We have a pretty standard, robust policy as it pertains to rezonings that come before the body, so certainly, that process has started at the air commission, and that will lead all the way back to this room for potential approval or rejection of any application. So, anything that has been discussed at the air commissions for our site plans, housing, literally anything, that's not, just to put a finer point, is not specific to what is being voted on with this annexation here tonight. And again, there's a fairly robust process that this body engages in that I lead when it comes to any type of rezoning or variance that an applicant may request after an annexation has went through. But literally, it's difficult for this body to sort of react to, you know, questions around specific applications at this point, considering we are probably, you know, months off from having that potentially come before this body at this point. So, I just want to make that clear. These are two related issues. We talk about annexation and then a rezoning, but fundamentally, what council is voting on here tonight is separate from whatever potential rezoning may come to us in the future and what that rezoning may or may not commit to from a site plan perspective.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that clarification. So, if there are no further questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda, may I have motion of approval of these items designated as consent by voice? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, de Akawar, Dorn, Green.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1149-2025, from which I abstain.
Remy Weiss, Harden.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1215-2025, in which I abstaining. Passed with the noted exceptions. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. There are five resolutions in the Finance and Governance Committee in one ordinance. The five subsequent resolutions that you all will hear are in relation to the City of Columbus voted bond package that was announced by our mayor. We recently had two public hearings on this, want to thank Council President for leading our discussion around the really most critical piece of this, which I would say is the housing component, but then also a public hearing we had last week regarding the other clauses that voters may see. This is one step in the process. There are two processes that, two steps that will happen in this process that council will go before. So, these orders that you see here are resolutions for us to continue that process totaling $1.9 billion for voters to consider. So, with that, I will read all five of them and then also summarize at the end. First up is, or resolution, excuse me, 0130X-2025, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $250 million for health, safety, and infrastructure, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. Next is ordinance 0131X-2025, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $250 million for recreation and parks, and to declare an emergency, Section 44-1E of the city charter. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. Next is resolution 0132X-2025, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $400 million for public service and to declare an emergency, Section 44-1E of the city charter. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. And next is ordinance 0133X-20, I'm sorry, resolution 0133X-2025, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $500 million for neighborhood development and affordable housing, and to declare an emergency, Section 44-1E of the city charter. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. And last of those resolutions is resolution 0134X-2025, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $500 million for public utilities and to declare emergency per Section 44-1E of the city charter. Again, just to reiterate, these last five resolutions, that these resolutions collectively resolve that it is necessary to submit to the electors the ballot measure of issuance of $1.9 billion in voted bonds comprised of $250 million for health and safety and infrastructure, $250 million for recreation and parks, $400 million for public service, $500 million for affordable housing, and $500 million for public utilities. These resolutions also authorize the city clerk to certify a copy of such resolution with the Franklin County Auditor with the instructions for the auditor to estimate the annual property tax levy. Again, these resolutions are simply us saying that we are going to proceed. The auditor will then give us what the calculation is that will be presented to voters, that will then come back to this body where we will then issue resolutions to proceed for that to go before the voters. Again, I want to thank all my colleagues who were at the hearing last week. When we talk about this bond issue, this is something that's become really routine for us here in the City of Columbus. Since 1956, we have had a capital program that invests in both city infrastructure that is critical to the operations of the city, but also our nonprofit partners, our neighborhoods, affordable housing, all the things that are critical to make the city function, particularly for a growing city. This will go before the voters to ask them for their approval of that, and it is really clear that we want to point out that since 1956, the issue, the city has never issued a levy to pay for those bonds, and it was because of 1956, we put in that mechanism that we set 25 cents aside of every income tax dollar to pay our debt service so that we don't raise the taxes of our voters to be able to cover that debt service. Really, what this is going to do, and what we're asking voters to do, is to back us. It's just to say that we double down that the city can issue this debt that then allows us to do as borrow at a lower cost to be able to save us tens of millions of dollars, literally, when we talk about projects, and allows us to do more projects in our community. So, I just say all that to say that there's a long road ahead here, that we will be talking about this a lot more, but it is the largest bond package in the city's history, but the city is the largest in its history, and that means that we have large challenges that we have to address, as well as infrastructure needs that we have to address, such as a fourth water plant, roads and bridges that have to be repaired, recreation centers as our city continues to grow, and most critical to our growth of our city, affordable housing, and making sure that we are making the investments necessary that folks can live, work, and play in our community. So, again, I want to thank the mayor for his vision, as well as Director Long and his team for all of their efforts behind this. I'll pause there before I move for passage of this final resolution. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage on resolution 0134X-2025.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, de Akawar, Dorn, Green.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Moving on, in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 1222-2025, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management, on behalf of the Office of Construction Management, to enter into a construction contract with Settling Building Company for the East Central Health Upgrades Project, to authorize the appropriation of $1,678,000, a transfer of $1,678,000, and an expenditure up to $1,678,000 within the neighborhood health center capital reserve fund to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service, and to amend the 2024 capital improvements budget. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this piece of legislation? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. And lastly, in that committee, we have ordinance 1359-2025, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Nalco Water, Inc., for the treatment and remediation of water systems under the purview of the Facilities Management Division, to authorize a expenditure of $280,359,000 within the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. This is an ongoing piece of legislation that our Department of Finance and Management, all the facilities that are under them, have gone through this review, looking at certain things such as water pressure and also water quality. This was really an impetus based off of the pandemic, where our building sat empty and caused some issues to some of our more aging buildings. So, this is just a continuation of that work, which is why there's a waiver of competitive bidding. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorn, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass. Thank you, Council President. Now, may I move to the Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. These next three, these next two ordinances, and there's actually three, one that was on our consent agenda, actually represent over $3.5 million of investment in critical infrastructure that These next three, these next two ordinances, and there's actually three, one that was on our consent agenda, actually represent over $3.5 million of investment in critical infrastructure that will promote resident health, economic development, and vibrancy through our nonprofit partners and institutions. Really proud to see that this is one of those ways that our capital dollars are going to work in our community every single day. So this ordinance, as well as the ordinance on our consent agenda, which was funding to support Zora House, will go to those critical infrastructure needs. So first up, we have ordinance 1212-2025, to amend the 2024 capital improvements budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriations between projects within the Development taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement in an amount up to $1,850,000 with Community for New Direction and Corporation for Property Renovations to be used for mental health and substance use disorder outpatient treatment, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,850,000 within the Development taxable Bond Fund, to advance funding on a predetermined schedule, to authorize expenditure prior to the approval of the purchase order, and to declare an emergency. This piece of legislation authorizes capital improvements to the Community for New Directions facility. This is a facility that is on the east side of Columbus Livingston Avenue that serves many of our residents that are dealing with drug and alcohol and mental health disorder. And I don't have to tell my colleagues around this size of how prevalent that has been, particularly coming out of the pandemic. And I see our president and CEO, Mr. John Dawson, who is here in the audience, want to thank him for his leadership that they are doing at Community for New Direction every single day on the front lines and helping our most vulnerable residents. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remi, Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
And lastly, in the Economic Development Committee this evening, we have ordinance 1286-2025, to amend the 2024 capital improvements budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Development taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement in an amount up to $1,400,000 with the Columbus College of Art and Design, in support of design and construction of the Community Pocket Park, which is a part of the Center for Creative Collaboration, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 within the Development taxable Bond Fund, to advance funding on a predetermined schedule, to authorize expenditures prior to the approval of the purchase order, and to declare an emergency. Again, this is a capital contribution to our, to the Columbus College of Art and Design for their ongoing efforts there. They are currently under and have wrapped up a capital campaign that will make significant investments to the campus itself, but this in particular will go to a public park that will serve our downtown residents and the greater community there. So really excited about this project and to see that Discovery District and that area become truly a vibrant place for all of our residents that call downtown home, as well as visitors and future students of CCAD. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I just, um...
This is our resident art expert between you and Councilmember Ray.
I don't know about that, but I do want to say, um, this is also exciting because this is part of an effort to really create an arts, really expand upon that arts district with the connection of the museum and with CCAD and what that area looks like, and really being a benefit not only to the students, but everyone in downtown. Whether you work, live, or play here, this is a place for everyone. And so I think anytime we're creating more beautiful spaces for people, for all of our residents to enjoy, it promotes healing, it promotes community, it promotes pride. And so I'm really excited that this will be part of that capital campaign. This will also be a public good that will come out of all the good things that already come out of CCAD. So I just wanted to highlight that, and I'm excited about this moving forward and what this will look like, so.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you for your advocacy, as well as Councilmember Remi and your representation at the Greater Columbus Arts Council. We know that arts are a part of our community, and not just from a cool amenities standpoint, but it is driving economic development. So thank you for that. Seeing no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remi, Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll have my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Borosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance today in public service and transportation, ordinance 3262, or 1362-2025, to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Double Z Construction Company for the pedestrian safety Hiawatha Park Drive, Silver Drive to Hudson Street project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,591,987.58 on the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project, and to declare an emergency. So I believe we have a little show and tell. It's been a while, friends, so here we go. This pro, this project consists of the design and construction of pedestrian and bikeway improvements along Hiawatha Park Drive from the intersection of Silver Drive south of I-71 to East Hudson Street. And there will be a shared use path will be added on the east side of Hiawatha Park Drive. A sidewalk will also be added on the west side of Hiawatha Park Drive, wherever sidewalk does not currently exist or is in disrepair within the project limit. So I want to just turn it over for a second to Deputy Director Young, if you can tell us just a little bit more about this project. And for folks, if you're not familiar, this is that Silver Drive runs parallel to I-71. It's over near the old, it's Crew Stadium. There's the Aldi and the Lowe's, and there's a little shopping area in that area as well. It kind of is the in-between between Linden and Clintonville. So if folks, you may not be able to see that here, but you can see the stretch of where we have some beautiful sidewalks and shared use paths. So Deputy Director, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Good, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember Borosa de Padilla, and council. Like you said, the project will be adding a 10-foot shared wise, uh, shared use path on the east side of Hiawatha and sidewalk on the west. The project's planned to start construction this midsummer. It should take approximately a year to complete. As always, construction's weather dependent. Will be planting or planning on planting in the spring, grass and plants. This path should offer a safe, comfortable connection to ride or bike within the Linden neighborhood, offering access to historic Crew Stadium and Ohio State Fairgrounds. It will also connect to the new path we just completed on Hudson Street from 71 to Cleveland Avenue. And these bike facilities are important bikeway connections identified in the city's bicycle, or I'm sorry, Bike Plus Plan Vision Network, which was adopted this last December. This should be a great improvement to the region, being able to get through these neighborhoods separated from traffic. Should just make to going any event at the state fairgrounds that much easier.
And we know that those, that especially that part of those neighborhoods are kind of surrounded by freeways, so it's a little difficult if you are on a mobility device, if you're walking, if you're on a bike, if you're pushing a stroller, for folks to get, especially to centers of community like the grocery store, or if folks are enjoying a concert at the Crew Stadium, or even some of the programming that happens there, this gives folks a safe pathway to get there, or even a safe way to trek if, or trek along, you know, if you just want to get out and ride your bike, that you have a connection point all the way from Hudson down and then back around. So I think you said it best when you talked about how this connects with our Vision Zero and inches us closer to that vision of really having zero fatalities by ensuring that our most vulnerable folks are safely on a path to get to the places that they need to go or want to go. So these improvements are not only the 10-foot shared path, but it also is stormwater control facilities, various tree lawn locations, street, uh, tree planting, so more trees will come along the sidewalk, replacement of curbs, median islands as necessary, waterline services, new curb ramps, and other work as may be necessary. The ordinance authorizes payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services to ensure pedestrian safety. The notice to proceed is very soon, June 26. I have to say, last meeting, I did notice to proceed the day before, and I saw our construction workers out there the next day, because my community meeting was right next door. So, um, so folks can be very excited to see that construction coming. It'll be a little bit of inconvenience for a whole lot of good. So do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remi, Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. It's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Neighborhood Recreation and Parks Committee, chaired by Councilmember De Akar. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. We have two ordinances in our committee this evening. First is ordinance 1266-2025, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into a renewal of the initial five-year lease from MC-NCLC to provide space for the operation of a senior center, to authorize the appropriation of $1,175,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Debt Retirement Fund Special Income Tax Subfund, to authorize the expenditure of $1,175,000 from the Debt Retirement Fund Special Income Tax Subfund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Recreation Parks has leased space in the Morse Center Shopping Center for 25 years for use as a Gilly Senior Recreation Center. The existing lease was authorized in 2019 for five years, with two renewal options of five years each with MC-NCLC. This ordinance will authorize the first renewal, a five-year lease, covering the period of August 1, 2025, through July 31, 2030. The base rent is $135,000 per year, $675,000 for the five-year renewal of the lease. Taxes, maintenance charges, and insurance add an estimated $5.50 per square foot yearly for an additional $500,000 over the five-year lease period. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remi, Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I'd like to pass the, to Vice Chair Weish to read and talk about our next ordinance. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Next, in Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks, we have 1277-2025, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to modify an existing contract with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for the Three Creeks Wetland Restoration Project, to authorize the appropriation of $80,300 within the Recreation and Parks Special Purpose Fund, Subfund, and Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize the transfer of $4,079.11 within the Recreation and Parks and Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize the amendment of the 2024 capital improvement budget, to authorize the expenditure of $80,300 from the Recreation and Parks Special Purpose Fund and Permanent Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will fund continued wetland restoration at the Three Creeks Park. The Three Creeks Park sits on 1,000 acres of former farmland on the far south side of Columbus. Restoring our wetlands provides countless benefits to the community, like natural, naturally reducing flooding, capturing carbon dioxide, and providing habitat for a variety of species. As 90% of the wetlands in the state of Ohio have been developed, the city has an amazing opportunity to lead by example and show the importance of conservation and restoration. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remi, Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. That's all for my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before the Workforce Education, uh, is the Workforce Education Labor Committee. That committee is chaired by Press Pro Tim. Press Pro Tim, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Tonight, in the Workforce Education Labor Committee, we have ordinance 1073-2025, to authorize the Executive Director of the Office of Education to enter a contract pursuant to Columbus City Code with Columbus City Learning Centers to plan and implement the 2025 Summer Success Program, an eight-week summer intensive learning readiness program focused on pre-kindergarten children without prior early childhood education experience needed for developing key kindergarten readiness skills for the achievement of the mayor's goal that every child is ready for kindergarten, and to authorize an expenditure of $175,000 from the general fund. This legislation authorizes our city's Office of Education to invest $175,000 into an eight-week summer immersive program for pre-kindergarten kids without having been prior enrolled in early childhood education experiences, and those who may not have sufficient support at home for developing both academic and social emotional kindergarten readiness skills. The Office of Education is partnering with Columbus City Learning Centers to provide this program, given their experience as the master operator of the Hilltop Early Learning Center, and their experience providing high-quality early learning programs to Columbus children. This program is scheduled to begin on June 10 of this year. Any questions from my council colleagues? I move to, I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston.
Yes.
Borosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
De Akauer.
Yes.
Dorance.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Remi.
Yes.
Weish.
Yes.
President Harden.
Abstain.
Ordinance passed. Council President, your permission, would like to move on to rules and reference.
Please.
Thank you. We have a number of ordinances tonight that are related to our Zonin Initiative, which is our efforts to modernize our zoning code here in Columbus. Tonight is a update to the first phase that we had, that this body voted on last July, and the first ordinance to come before us is number 1471-2025, to rezone specific properties with, within certain city Columbus corridors to one of the following mixed-use districts, UGN1, UGN2, Urban General District, and CAC, Community Activity District. As I mentioned, this legislation is a continuation of our Zonin efforts, which will rezone 160 parcels into Title 34, which was created by the first phase of Zonin, along or adjacent to State Route 161, located between Ponderosa Drive and Sinclair Road. This update is focused on creating more connected and vibrant corridor with more housing options in the Northland neighborhood, addressing current neighborhood needs, and planning for future growth of Columbus. On March 10, this council approved Resolution Number 0030X-2025, accepting the Phase One update proposal and initiating a 60-day public comment period. We had a public meeting here in council chambers last week to review that public feedback and provided an opportunity for additional folks to weigh in. I just want to say, I know we've got a number of community leaders that are here with us tonight. I think this entire council appreciates how much folks within that area have embraced. This needed overhaul of the zoning code within that area is rare for community leaders to be as aggressive when we were here back down last July, voting the first phase to say, "We want in," and it's actually wonderful to be with here tonight saying, "Yes. Let's, let's get this moving as quickly as we can." So with that, I want to open up the floor to Louis Teba, who's our program manager for the Zonin Initiative, to give a short presentation regarding this update, um, the Zonin efforts.
All right, thank you. All right, President Protemp Dorance, President Harden, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about Zonin and the work we're doing to update the city's zoning code comprehensively. So if you can pull up the PowerPoint presentation. All right, thank you. So this ordinance is going to cover the 161 State Route Zonin Update, and we're going to have two map corrections as well that are from Phase One. So as Councilmember President Protemp Dorance indicated, this was really a community-driven effort. The community came to us and asked us to include and to at least explore putting Zonin on the 161. And so we have been engaging with the community since November. You can see our public engagement summary. We had the 60-day public comment period. We had over 1,800 mailers, which were sent to property owners, tenants, and people who lived within 125 feet of a property. We had two council hearings. We had an online map survey that had 303 survey respondents. We had, we went to the Northland Community Council full meetings five times. We went to the Northland Community Zonin Subcommittee six times. We did library pop-ups, so a great deal of engagement. And we have letters of support from the Northland Community Council, the Northland Area Business Association, the 161 Task Force, and Elevate Northland. So overall, we have good, strong support from the community. So here's a map you can see of what we had from Phase One. This is Phase One in the area. We have Regional Activity Center. That's the darker blue that you see there at the intersection of Cleveland and 161, and then on Bush Boulevard. And then you can see we have Community Activity Center going north on Cleveland Avenue. But you'll see that 161, the vast majority did not receive any updated zoning. So this is the proposal for you today. We are doing Community Activity Center that has a five-story height with a two-story bonus to seven stories. And the small area that you'll see there in between is Urban General Two, which allows for up to four stories, and that's due to the nature of those parcels. They're just smaller parcels. When you combine all that, this will be the result on the map. You can see that we are connecting those nodes of Regional Activity Center with Community Activity Center along 161. And the result, I think this is probably the most important thing that we're doing as part of the zoning code update, is we're going to be going from 20 zoning districts along that portion of corridor to just three, and they will have design guidelines in that zoning code, which currently they do not have. The final portion of the ordinance is we're going to have map corrections on two parcels. These were holdovers from Phase One. One is on the south side. One is on the south side. It is currently CPD. It's going to be going to CAC to match all the surrounding parcels. And then the other one is at the intersection of Westerville Road and Cleveland Avenue. There's a small portion right there, I believe, is C4, that we're going to be rezoning to match the surrounding zoning, which is UGN1. And that's it for the 161 and these map corrections. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions, councilmembers? Seeing none, I would love to invite Ms. Shannon Pine, our Chief Zoning Official, to present as well.
Good evening, President Harden, President Protam Dorans, and members of council. I'm here to discuss the second and third ordinances that are part of the Zonin Phase 1 update. The first ordinance that we have is Ordinance 1418-2025. This is a code change to Title 33, the current zoning code, which will allow an opt-in mechanism for an applicant-driven rezoning process. Currently, the way the code reads now, only city council can rezone property from Title 33 to Title 34. This mechanism was created as a go-between effort as we are continuing to update the zoning code. If an applicant has a project that perhaps would include a parcel that is zoned in a Title 33 district, for example, as what we see here, that applicant would have the opportunity to bring their zoning before city council, either in a condensed rezoning process where there would be a staff review and then the ordinance would be submitted to city council, or if the parcel itself is predominantly in a Title 33 district, once the properties are combined, then it would go through a regular rezoning process. That system would be in place as soon as this ordinance is in effect in 30 days. Before I move on to the next code change, are there any questions about this ordinance?
Any questions, councilmembers?
Yes, I do. When you said that a system will be in place, what do you mean, a system will be in place?
I mean that when the ordinance is in effect, applicants will be permitted to file a rezoning application.
Would you imagine that system having instructions or a key person in your department that residents are able to reach out to and be guided through the process, given that this is very new?
Yes, they can contact me directly, and that most of these will be considered an accelerated residential project because they would include more housing. And Phil Asher on my team is our accelerated residential program manager, so he and I will definitely get things in place before July 9th, when this would be in effect, to make sure that there's a smooth transition for any rezonings that are filed.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember Beatty. Any other questions on this specific piece, the opt-in piece of legislation, before we move on to the next? Seeing none, Ms. Pine.
Okay, thank you. So the next ordinance is code changes to Title 34. This is 1419-2025. So the new code has been in effect for almost a year. As my zoning clearance staff has worked with the code, there have been some needs for either minor corrections that were discovered that were not found when we were doing final edits to the legislation last year, or just clarifications that are needed in order for my staff to be able to do their jobs better, or for the applicants to understand the code requirements a little bit better. So we've got some clarifications to some of the land use definitions, some of our measurements, different district standards themselves, clarifying that barbed wire and chain-link fences are new, new of these things are not allowed. If they are existing, they can remain as pre-existing. We are removing or relocating certain uses on our use table to clarify, and just making some changes to the district standards and the general site development standards to really just align with either city policies or rules and regulations. And once again, I'd be happy to go into more detail about any of those, but it's pretty boring stuff. Boring, but necessary.
Never. Zoning is never boring, never. Any questions, councilmembers? Seeing none, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I did want to pause and see if Director Messer, if you had anything you wanted to add from the presentations at this point.
President Protam, thanks for the opportunity to comment. I just want to express my gratitude for all of your staffs and the hard work, and my team. It is a lot of detail work and a lot that goes in even the small update, so just wanted to express my appreciation.
Yeah, thank you, Director. And again, thanks to everyone on the administrative side, both in your shop and everywhere else. We talked about this being a small update, but it's no small thing. We're talking about, we had more comments than we had parcels in this one, so there's still a lot for the team to do to review, to make sure that we're meaningfully engaging with folks. And certainly, we talked about the opt-in legislation, about thinking through how this process, as we seek to rezone the entire city, will continue to play out and things that we need to do in the interim to make sure that we're being thoughtful about how those phases get implemented, but also knowing that we have two different codes that are operating right now, which can be sometimes terribly confusing as we're trying to, again, get to, you know, 2025 into the future versus things like 1955, you know, the way that we operate. So again, my thanks to you, and certainly everyone here. But with that, I want to turn the floor over to a couple of community leaders. When I mentioned earlier in this, that's, one of the reasons why this update is moving through is that we had firm expectation from the Northland Community Council and other folks within that area that they did not want to wait many, many months or years to make sure that they were included in these modernization efforts, and it was that advocacy. And also of the birthday fellow up here as well, Councilmember Remy has been a champion of that area for a long time about why we're here tonight. So with that, I wanted to first invite Ms. Hamel, Vice President of the Northland Community Council, to the podium, and then after that, we will have Alice Fuller, who's the co-founder of Elevate Northland, and also President of the Northland Area Business Association, also speaking on these ordinances. Ms. Vice President, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you. Council President Harden, President Protam Dorans, and city council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of Ordinance 1417-2025. My name is Pat Hamel. I'm the Vice President of the Northland Community Council, and I've also been a resident in Northland in Salem Village for over 18 years now. This change to the zoning code will allow us to have walkable mixed-use development along the East 161 Corridor. It has established design standards that are critical for the successful redevelopment of the area as 161 road improvements through ODOT and CODA bus routes are implemented in the future. The modern urban design principles that undergird Title 34 will help guide growth in a way that is both thoughtful and inclusive, ensuring that the 161 Corridor can serve as a vital hub for residents and businesses alike. Inclusion of the East 161 Corridor into the Title 34 Phase 1 standards will provide opportunities for new housing, support for existing and new local businesses, and will make it easier for our residents to access transit and community services. In addition, I would like to thank all of the staff who worked on this proposal, because we asked for this less than a year ago, and it's getting done. It's proof that when people work together, government can be speedy. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any other questions, or councilmembers want to bask in that compliment of government moving quickly? Maybe the nicest thing anyone has said to us quite a while up here. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate it. Again, the next speaker to come for council is Ms. Alice Fuller, who's certainly a champion of this area as well. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Good evening, Council President Harden, President Protam Dorans, members of council. My name is Alice Fuller. As a volunteer leader of community organizations in Northland, I am personally grateful for the attention and resources granted by the city to update the 161 Corridor with the new Zonin standards. The 161 Corridor is on the cusp of a lot of growth and change. With the Linkus Project, with a CODA grant for workforce transportation, with the continuing work of Elevate Northland to bring attention to Columbus's International District on 161, with even more new American entrepreneurs opening restaurants and shops, and with an effort to modernize our branding and communicate Northland's value with messaging, a new logo, and public art, the 161 Corridor is poised to surprise people and regain the affection of Columbus and suburban residents. Being recognized as an area worth rezoning, an area that will prioritize walkability and mixed-use and transit-oriented development, that means so much to us. Thank you, on behalf of the Northland Area Business Association, Elevate Northland, the Northland Alliance, and the 161 Task Force. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Any questions for Alice? Seeing none, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. As we continue our efforts, again, to modernize our zoning code across the entire city, it's a great night to have, again, community leaders that are standing up and saying, "We would like to be next." And again, to Pat's comment, it is nice when we're able to actually meet that kind of ask and meet it at a reasonable speed, which government is not always known for. So thank you for those kind words. With that, any other questions or comments from colleagues before I move for passage on this first item? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 1418-2025 to amend Chapter 3310 to our opt-in process for contiguous parcels to rezone from a Title 33 zoning district to Title 34 zoning district. This legislation, again, establishes a procedure for how Title 33 parcels that were not included in Phase 1 or Phase 1 update could be rezoned into Title 34 2024 zoning code districts while comprehensive, more timely Zonin efforts continue. This opt-in process will be applicant-driven. Rezoning processes where an application may be filed with the Department Building Zoning Services requesting the same or less intense 2024 zoning code districts for a parcel that is immediately contiguous to a parcel that was rezoned as part of the initial Phase 1 rezoning, or this update that we just passed a moment ago. Change as Columbus City Codes through 310 is necessary to allow an opt-in process. This amendment will continue council's efforts to further key aspects of the zoning initiative to lever digital housing and foster connected communities across Columbus. Again, I think this is another really timely piece of legislation as we consider these two zoning codes sort of coexisting next to one another, as we're thinking about, how do we do more? How do we do more quickly, but also do more in the sense of we want that to be appropriate for the neighborhoods that are in. And specifically, I want to thank Director Messer and certainly Chief Zoning Official Pine and the City Attorney's Office. This was a difficult piece of legislation, really, to make sure that could fit both from a legislative standpoint, but also then practically for Director Messer's office. And it was a real key partnership to make sure that we were able to bring something here tonight to make sure that we're able to move forward. So just thank you to everyone who made that happen. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to just acknowledge our folks who came down, our partners in the community who came down. I think no one knows your community like you do, and I think when you can advocate with your, for your community, and we can partner together, it brings along the best products. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think the words that you, obviously, when you came here, even before, when we were going through the first part of Zonin, and you were coming to say, "Hey, what about us, and what does this look like for us?" And as we think about the changes that are coming to Columbus, you're correct in saying that you are a vital, vibrant part of the city. And so I just, I didn't want that to be glossed over, and I think in the proceedings that we're doing, for folks to just see that you're coming down here and, you know, we are acknowledging that you're here, but it really is meaningful. And I think that the product that will come from that, when we look five, 10 years down the road, it will be better. We will all be better because of your advocacy and the work that you've done and you've continued, you will continue to do, not just in your part of the city, but it makes every part of the city stronger, right? Every time we make investments like this. So I just wanted to take a second to really acknowledge that and just say thank you and continue to push, because you can see the push gets results, as you said. But that is, it's just, I'm excited for what is to come, and I'm excited for, as we continue to grow, how we will grow, and grow authentically and intentionally and be true to who we are in the different routes and the different neighborhoods of the city. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have Ordinance 1419-2025 to amend various provisions of Title 34 of the Columbus City Codes to address unnecessary code cleanup. As this was mentioned in the presentation, this legislation is necessary to update Phase 1 in Title 34 and incorporate minor revisions, clarification to facilitate the development that was envisioned by these mixed-use districts. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And next, we have Ordinance 1579.
amended, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 1579-. Oh, I'm sorry.
If amended as submitted.
That was, now we're going to move for passage.
Second.
There we go.
Thank you.
Clerk please, clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, we have Ordinance 1579-2025 to amend various sections of Columbus City Codes in order to modernize terminology and update standards-related graphics allowed in and around the downtown area. This legislation, in addition to the overall zoning package, that will update Columbus's outdated graphics code to accommodate carefully considered digital graphic installations downtown surrounding areas. As I mentioned last week, I'm planning to refer this legislation back to committee for additional feedback to make sure it has the opportunity to be heard by a graphics commission, which will happen later this month, and that the goal would be for this legislation to be brought back to council hopefully shortly thereafter. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I request this to be referred back to committee.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Thank you, Council President. All ahead of this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, I think we're going to pause for zoning. Is there motion to recess? Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Meeting is in recess. We'll now come to order. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green. That's right, thank you. Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to suspend the reading of the journal? Clerk please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee and all members serving on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight, zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear staff presentations where ordinance have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes for the same rules as the city council. All speakers on the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of an area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fail out of a speaker slip, but we do ask to alert city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee hearing. We do have two public speakers signed up to speak on ordinances here this evening. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or front the testimony you're about to give? Shopey the truth, nothing of the truth, as you should answer in the pains of penalty of perjury, so please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services and Dan Bleschman from the Department of Public Service have been sworn in. The first ordinance to come before us here tonight is number 1485-2025 to rezone 7444 Cabbage Road, being 34.00-plus acres located on the east side of Cabbage Road, 2,400-plus feet north of Central College Road from R Rural District to PUD4 Planned Unit Development District and R1 Residential District. Site consists of five parcels, two of which are developed with a single unit dwelling and three of which are undeveloped. The requested districts will allow the development of 106 single-unit dwellings in a platted subdivision on private streets in SubArea A, and will retain the existing single-unit dwellings in SubAreas B and C. A concurrent council variance for SubAreas B and C to allow existing single-unit dwellings and one lot in SubArea B that do not front upon public street will also be considered later on tonight's agenda. Ball's approval. from city staff and the Development Commission. There is no area commission or civic association recommendation with this application. We do have one public speaker signed to speak against the ordinance, so before we hear from that resident, we'll hear from staff report from Mr. Tim Dietrich. The floor is yours.
President Harden, Chair Doran, and members of council, the site consists of five parcels, two of which are developed with single-unit dwellings, and three of which are undeveloped, all in the R Rural District as the result of recent annexation into the city of Columbus. The applicant proposes to develop the site with a single-unit dwelling residential development in the following manner. SubArea A will be zoned to the PUD 4 Planned Unit Development District and will allow up to 106 single-unit dwellings. SubArea B and SubArea C will be zoned to the R1 Residential District and will each retain their existing single-unit dwelling. North and south of the site are single-unit dwellings in the R1 Restricted Suburban Residential District within London Township. East of the site are single-unit dwellings in the PUD 4 Planned Unit Development District, and west of the site is Hoover Reserve Park in the P Parkland District within London Township. The PUD text includes use restrictions and supplemental development standards addressing density, including a maximum dwelling count, lot size, setbacks, yards, traffic access, pedestrian and bicycle interconnectivity with adjacent developments, buffering, landscaping and screening, fencing, open space, and includes a commitment to develop the site in accordance with the submitted site plan and building elevations. Additionally, there are specific commitments regarding building design and materials, such as roof pitches, building height, garage doors, and minimum home size within the text. This rezoning request has a concurrent council variance that will allow the existing lots, now known as SubArea B and SubArea C, to not front on public streets. The site is not within the boundaries of a council-adopted land use plan, but is subject to early adoption of C2P2 design guidelines. City departments find the requested PUD 4 Planned Unit Development to be consistent with surrounding uses and including nearby single-unit developments with similar densities. The site plan and building design commitments included in the PUD text are consistent with C2P2 design guidelines. And lastly, the request will result in more housing, meeting the city's objective of creating more housing in all areas of the city. Therefore, our city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Any questions from council members of the department at this time? Seeing none, I will invite the applicant representative forward for presentation, Mr. Mike Shannon. Welcome back to council, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President. Chairman Doran's Mike Shannon, on behalf of the applicant. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening on behalf of EPCOM. Certainly, the subject site is indicative of what you've come to know as the EPCOM empty nester product. They are targeted to the 55 in older population. I've been representing them for 35 years, and I used to say it would be housing for your parents or your grandparents, and now it would be housing for me. The price point here starts at about $650, and any add-ons will get you up to $700,000. Obviously, we spent a lot of time getting unanimous staff approval and Development Commission approval. We've worked with all the neighbors who've reached out with us, and I'm aware that there's one neighbor that might speak in opposition who we were not able to get a hold of, but I respectfully submit to this body that EPCOM has proved over and over again that their residences are of the highest quality. Their density is only four units to the acre. We have the required dedications of open space and the division of planning successfully put us through the wringer on a number of elements. It was traffic-wise, two jurisdictions, both the county and the city, and we have approval from all those regulatory agencies, as well as unanimous approval from the Development Commission. And I would say with the remainder of my time to address any questions and rebuttal if necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any questions of the applicant representative at this time? Seeing none, I will invite you back up.
Thank you, sir.
We did have two public speakers signed to speak against this ordinance. One has withdrawn their speaker slip after a discussion with Mr. Shannon. The other public speaker that we have signed to speak against the ordinance is Ms. Alice Fuller. Ms. Fuller, welcome back.
Good evening, Council President Harden, Council President Proton Doran, members of council. My name is Alice Fuller, and I am a resident of Cabbage Road. Humanity is a complicated thing. I was just up here advocating for more growth, density, and development in the Northland Corridor. However, on this ordinance, at the risk of sounding like a NIMBY, I wanted to say a few words. This area of Columbus is a new section to the city. This is the first annexed parcel on Cabbage Road, so the council might not have a sense of this neighborhood yet. Cabbage Road is 5,000 feet long. In a typical Columbus neighborhood, 5,000 feet of street with parcels being 50 feet wide would host 100 homes on each side or 200 homes on a road this long. But Cabbage Road has just 38 homes, five on the west side of the street with a sunset view overlooking Hoover Reservoir, and 33 on the east side. Many of these could be described as estates. Some have turrets, couple of, not mine. At least one has been featured in Architectural Digest. Each parcel contains just one house, and most, if not all parcels, are at least one acre. The property owner here, Earl, he's a nice guy, I've met him. He's planning to continue living in his home and build the development around himself, so of course, he cares about it being built thoughtfully, and that's probably why he chose such a reputable developer. I know he enjoys his natural surroundings and the sounds of owls and frogs and coyotes, and I hope his developer will be mindful of habitat destruction. It's his right to use his land as he wishes. I did not buy it when it was up for sale. In terms of the character of the neighborhood, I'm only requesting that City Council and the staff use its authority to ensure this neighborhood is designed and built gently. If at all possible, if we could move the entrance road to the east side of the development, so it goes out onto Lee, which already has a traffic light, side paths, and left-turn lanes. In comparison, Cabbage Road is a two-lane road with no shoulder stop sign at the end that someone recently blew through and ran into the yard of the house at the Central College. Cabbage is lined with protected watershed lands, your watershed, and native plants, and heavily used by cyclists and runners going in and out of Hoover Reservoir Park on Ohio Bike Route 50, which exits the park exactly across the street from the planned entrance to the development. It might seem impossible to move the entrance and exit the other way, but in fact, the previously planned development at the southeast corner of this site, so this, I don't know if we still have it up there, no, this is a rectangle, right? The southeast corner of it overlaps with a community called Trade Plus that was slated for development at Central College and Lee Road, a city project. That one is not moving forward due to some geological challenges with the bedrock, and I had been told it had already been sold to a new owner, but maybe it hasn't officially changed hands. Thus, the opportunity to purchase a roadway easement from that landholding is now available, taking the community's construction, traffic, dump trucks, and heavy equipment in and out at a traffic light would greatly mitigate the noise impact. And if the developer needs higher density to make the math work, we've got some great hotel properties and parking lots in Northland that I'd love to show them. Thank you. There any questions for them?
Yep, thank you, Ms. Fuller. Any questions from my council colleagues at this time? Seeing none, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. Mr. Shannon, if you wouldn't mind coming up and if you can address the concerns that were articulated by our public speaker.
Thank you again, Mr. President, Mr. Chair. It's hard to argue with that speaker. Obviously, her heart's in the right place. I can indicate to you, though, that based on the traffic access study that was approved by the county and the city, this has to be our access. We are not contiguous and/or adjoining to Lee Road. It is to the east of us, and other developments between us and Lee Road are already zoned, one for multifamily. So, again, we're a single-family, large lots, four units to the acre is one of the lower densities you've ever asked to be approved. I can't think that this is actually 3.48 units per acre. You're not going to get anything less dense, and in this environment, even people over 55 are struggling for houses. You can look at the price point and say they're not struggling, but my wife and I haven't figured out how to get into an EPCOM unit yet, but we're close. So, with all due respect, I'd ask for passage of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any...
Mr. Shannon, could you, just for the sake of, you know, what I've received or viewed, can you just give a more of an overview, number of units and everything like that as far as the project?
Sure. We are at 108 units on approximately 31 acres. That comes out to a density of about 3.5 units per acre. If you were to do a single-family, R1, R2, R2, you'd be looking at 50-foot lots, 50 by 100. These are obviously much larger. They are standalone condominiums. The architecture is available that we are in our packet that we are committing to. And we've done similar sites where there have, in fact, been mansions. On Tanger River Road, there was a row of very prominent mansion-like properties that were developed by EPCOM, as well as Roman Elliott Hughes. And the transition not only increased the property value of their neighbors, but it was almost seamless. So, EPCOM is unique in that it's a very, very high-end product at a very, very low density. To be frank with you, I've done more zonings for EPCOM outside of the city of Columbus than I've done inside, you know, and stuff like that. So, from, Councilman Beatty, from your perspective, is there anything I haven't touched on? Done the traffic study, to the satisfaction of both...
Okay, so, we're talking about the, you know, the exit out into Cabbage Road. What's the screening and fencing? The map I have, I'm mixed up a little bit on my directions with the screen and fencing.
Sure. Number one, we're required, obviously, to do sidewalk along the frontage. We have submitted a, the site plan has our landscape plan on it, and we also had to agree that we would cooperate by donating additional land into the city of Columbus for right-of-way. So, we had to leave some property there that we anticipate will ultimately come into the city of Columbus via a right-of-way deed. It is now in the county. But they don't skim on the buffering either at the entrance point or around their perimeter, and you can see the amount of existing buffering that we tried to keep there in the southeast corner. And obviously, we're doing an awful lot tree planting around our perimeters and around our streets. And again, that access had to be approved initially by the county as a part of the annexation petition, similar to the one you talked about earlier. And then the city of Columbus got involved, and they pinpointed that location, and it was based on what they said, not what we submitted. Thank you, sir.
Other, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, do you have a question? Anyone else? Mr. Shannon, again, just to underline that point directly to our public speaker. So, again, oftentimes, some of the other sort of adjacent development, maybe which has not happened yet, but is aware to our division of traffic management around sort of what makes the most sense from an access standpoint. So, here, in fact, you're telling us essentially, you know, this is what essentially the county and the city told you all to utilize for access. Is that fair?
Yes, sir. It's not uncommon, though, to reach out to the city of Columbus once you get your zoning and work on a, I believe Dan Bleschman calls it a mobility plan, that they help you, they actually appraise the neighborhood and determine construction traffic. If there's a remote possibility to bring it in someplace other than Cabbage, I would discuss it with them. We want to be a good neighbor, not only once we're there, but as we're building. They've done thousands of units, not only in Ohio, but throughout the southeastern United States, and that's all I could really address in that regard.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's just a very reasonable point on the sense of if there's other options from a, particularly the most disruptive time for a project like this is going to be during that construction period, if there's other opportunities, it sounds like you and your client would not be opposed to trying to figure that out.
And by happenstance, my partners happen to represent some of the contiguous property owners that are vacant, but in the process of rezoning and contract, and it would be easier than usual to accommodate that request. So, you have my word that we'll reach out to traffic and follow up on that, Mr. Chairman. Makes sense.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I appreciate the comments from Ms. Fuller. I think we might be able to hopefully address one of them through part of this process. I think the other one's difficult for the applicant, to me, given what the county and city have asked of them at this point. But I appreciate the comments, and hopefully we can help to facilitate at least something less of an impactor in the construction phase, hopefully. So, appreciate being down here on that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Doran, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Thank you. Next, I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur Doran, Screen, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we will move into the council variances portion of our agenda. First, we have ordinance 2170-2024 to grant a variance provision to Section 3332.037, R2F Residential District 3312, I'm sorry, 3312.25, maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, and 3312.49c required parking, 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements, and 3332.14 R2F area district requirements, and 3332.19 fronting, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 41 South Cypress Avenue to allow a two-unit, two-single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. This site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling. The requested council variance will legitimize and allow completion of the construction of a detached garage with a single-unit dwelling located above, also as a carriage house. A council variance is required because the current district allows one single or one two-unit dwelling, but does not allow two single, I'm sorry, two single-unit dwellings on one lot. This request includes area variances to maneuvering, parking space lot with requirements, fronting, side yard, rear yard, reduce parking from four required spaces to two. The proposal has approved from city staff, but a unanimous disapproval from the Franklin area commission. The applicant appeared before council on February 10th of 2025, at which time testimony was taken from the applicant regarding this variance request. The testimony presented additional questions for members of council, and the matter was postponed, with the applicant being advised that we would be permitted to submit additional documentation in support of his request based upon those questions that were raised at that hearing. We're now reconvening the hearing on that matter. Because council's consideration of the request of area variances is dependent on council finding that an undue hardship exists to support the request for a use variance, once again, we'll address the use variance first. As a reminder, under Columbus City Codes, before authorizing any variance, city councils shall first determine that such a variance will not impair inadequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property, unreasonably increase the congestion of public streets, increase in the danger of fires, endanger the public safety, unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of inhabitants of the city. Additionally, the following criteria must be met by each applicant at the use variance to allow for the land use to the purpose other than the allowed and the district has prescribed in the relevant regulation. To obtain a use variance, an applicant must demonstrate an undue hardship, which the city codes describe as taking into consideration, quote, "If such use will not adversely affect the surrounding property or surrounding neighborhood, and if council is satisfied that granting such a variance will alleviate some hardship or difficulty which warrants a variance from comprehensive plan." First, we'll ask for a summary of the matter, including updates, if any, since our last hearing. We'll first start with the Department of Building and Zoning Services, and we'll have that from Mr. Tim Dietrich. Mr. Dietrich, the floor is yours.
The site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling in the R2F Residential District. The property owner received a working without permit order on May 18th, 2023. While the property owner maintains the previous garage had a dwelling unit within, considered a carriage house, the Department of Building and Zoning Services was unable to locate any city records of a carriage house on this property. The requested council variance will allow the addition of a single-unit dwelling over a detached garage, resulting in two single-unit dwellings on one lot. To the north, south, and east are single-unit dwellings in the R2F Residential District, and to the west is a warehouse in the M Manufacturing District. The site is located within the planning boundaries of the West Franklinton Plan, which recommends medium-high-density residential land uses, and is also subject to early adoption of C2P2 design guidelines. Staff concurs with the applicant's analysis of the practical difficulties in achieving the proposed carriage house on this property. The requested council variance will allow two single-unit dwellings on one lot in the R2F Residential District. Staff supports this request as the addition of a single-unit dwelling over a detached garage is consistent with both the plan's recommendation and the existing development pattern in the neighborhood. The request is compatible to other carriage house requests in urban residential neighborhoods in the city, and does not represent the addition of an incompatible use to the area, and therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Questions for the department at this time? So, Mr. Dietrich, just as far as like new information, one of the reasons why we did postpone this legislation was specific to that question of, you know, what was this structure, and what was it intended for as a dwelling unit or not as a dwelling unit as related to potential variances that require. So, again, based on the review of... So, again, based upon the review of the department at this point, there's nothing that the city has ever been able to establish that that was in fact a carriage house at some point. Is that, is that fair?
Correct, yes. There was no city records of a carriage house at that, at that property.
Anything else of notes based upon, you know, the facts that were presented back in February compared to where we are today that are noteworthy as far as either information that the applicant has provided or from additional, you know, research or sort of review by the department at this time?
Not from the BZS staff, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was, what was your reply? I couldn't hear that.
I said not from BZS, Building and Zoning Services staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the department at this time? And just a reminder for council members that you're welcome to engage with the department if there are questions that are, if there are questions that are generated based upon testimony that were, that were given, if in fact you wanted to ask about that from a department standpoint, you're welcome to do so. I'll just try and keep order here as much as I can. So, with that, I do want to invite the applicant and its representative forward. So, we have both Mr. Jason Huggard, who is the applicant, and his architect representative, Ms. Brenda Parker. So, if I could swear you in both, can you get up here real quick? Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shove the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury. So, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours.
I do.
To recap from February, Mr. Huggard bought the property thinking he had a single-family dwelling that had three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and a carriage house that had one garage space, one bedroom, and one bathroom. That is indicated on the Franklin County Auditor site. It's documented on there as two separate dwelling units. So, he thought he was buying the property with two separate dwelling spaces. So, the footprint of the structure remains the same. Basically, the framing was in such bad shape that the contractor thought it was necessary to replace it. He just ended up replacing it while the plans were submitted to the city, and he didn't wait for approvals. And then, once it hit kind of the zoning, once it got flagged by the zoning department, that contractor abandoned the project and left Mr. Huggard in a pretty bad place trying to figure out financially how to manage through this process of his contractor leaving, and it's half-under construction, no approvals. So, it's just been kind of a mess. But the building was a carriage house. It should have been brought into compliance. Mr. Huggard was unaware of the process with carriage houses. Since it was existing, you know, he thought, why, why would he need any special approvals in order to renovate that structure? So, like I said, it used to have a gable roof, and when it was, when the framing was being replaced, they thought they'd get a little bit more head height, and they did a shed roof instead. When I came into the picture, which was midway through, once it got flagged by zoning, I proposed a little bit of reconfiguration to the carriage house to improve it so that we could get two parking spaces in the garage. That way, one, the carriage house could have a parking space as well as the house could have a parking space. And then, we kind of moved all the, all the living spaces upstairs with just a simple stair up. So, we tried to kind of improve it from what the contractor had constructed, but it is still just a one-bedroom, one-bath. We just have two-car spaces now instead of the one car as, as it was previously. You want to add anything?
Well, I bought the property in 20, January 2022. So, the guy submitted plans, started working on it. And he said, why have the front house look nice and the back house be all beat up? So, he started doing reframing. They came and stopped us. I didn't go back in and work on it and everything. That's why it's the way it is. There's still room for improvement. So, if there, if we are past anything through the city or anything, I can make sure every permit's pulled and everything's by code and everything. I was, I bought it for me and my family to move there. I didn't buy it to rent. It was a two-unit turned into a one-single family. Yeah, and I'm just hoping everything goes right.
So, a question to that point. So, you mentioned at the prior hearing in February, also in the additional documents that have been submitted to the city at this point, that your intention is to have this be a single-family house with your family living in, with, I believe in February you had mentioned you had sort of college-age daughter who was planning to, to live in the carriage house? Is there, have you held this property out for sale at any point?
Yeah, because I was in panic mode. I mean, I've been dealing with homeless people breaking in, people stealing doors, busting with vandalism, everything. I was in panic mode trying to see if I can get an offer. I don't, I've never been through this process before. I don't know if it's just me doing it myself or a company could come in and take over, whatever. So, I was in panic mode, but I would like to keep the house. I really still have the plans that I put my all into this. I still got the plans of me and my family trying to move down here and then, you know, going on with everything we plan to do. But, yeah, I did, and but I wouldn't even get close to near what I got into it. So, I would rather keep it and do it. I just, I was in panic mode.
Okay.
Mister, I think you just live a couple streets over. It's not like he's, you know, coming from another part of town. He is in Franklinton already.
Probably like 10 streets, 10 streets up. But my, me and my wife grew up down here, and her family is in the neighborhood, you know? So, I was going to move back down here. It's becoming a better neighborhood from when we was in there. I didn't plan on back then moving back, but now that the neighborhood's getting better, we plan to move back closer to her family, my daughter going to school, you know, and everything. But I'm just caught in a situation, this is a financial thing for three and a half years. But I would, I would love to continue with it.
Thank you. And I guess the, one of the reasons why I want to ask you that is when we talk about from a variance standpoint, the, you know, this is a sort of legal process that we're in right now. You know, one of the questions is the credibility of the applicant, and, you know, when you're saying, hey, my intention is to basically utilize this property in this manner, and that's part of the record here. And if that property is also simultaneously being held out for public sale, you know, the, there's a natural question here of what exactly is the accurate story that we're, we're sort of being told here? So, if, just to summarize, if, and again, feel free to correct me. It has been your intention for the family to basically utilize this property in the manner that you've suggested from these variances, but you have held it out for public sale because you, you were concerned around basically the financial aspect of sort of what was going on here?
Yes.
Questions for council colleagues at this point? We do have a number of public speakers, so I'm going to invite you both back up.
I have questions. I was just pausing. Is the listing still open right now, the listing for sale, or has it been closed?
Yeah, it's been up for a few months, and everybody's trying to lowball me, but I'm, I would take a big loss. I really ain't said yes to nobody or anything. I just put it up.
But, but right now, it's still, but right now, it's still open?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then the second thing, so currently, no one is living in either unit, the front or the back?
No. The front unit is still being, we got permits to continue, we got permits to continue working on the front while we wait on to see what goes on in the back. But I stopped just to see, I don't want to put everything into this and then take a big loss on the back, and then now I'm just stuck with a house that I probably have to take a big loss. I mean, I use my savings and everything.
Okay. So, the, so in other words, unless you are able to finish the carriage house, you, the front house would not be appropriate, or at least in your mind, for you and your wife to move into?
And my daughter, I really wanted the carriage house to keep her close, you know, let her have her own area and like her own way of living, maybe a few hundred a month, save it up for when she can get her own house. That's the whole plan. That was the whole plan with the carriage house, for my daughter to be living closer to us while she goes to school.
Okay. And so, in the cur-
Can you move a little? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And, and so, the, the current resident, the current residence, it's just you and your wife living in that house? The daughter doesn't?
We don't live-
No, no, I mean, the, the, the one down the street or 10 blocks away or whatever it is.
No, my daughter's still there.
Oh, okay, so the daughter's still living in the house? Okay. So, would it be fair to say that if you are unable to move forward, that you would find that the, the entire project is useless, and you would then at that time want to sell it?
I mean, I wouldn't know. I didn't look at it like that yet because I don't know exactly what's going to happen. I just know if, without it, I would be in deeper hole than I am now financially. Far as that, I would have to probably take out some more loans, pay off and all. I'd have to reconfigure that at that point. Sorry. I would have to reconfigure everything I planned for this project. Basically, I'm just stuck in a situation. I'm confused. I don't, I've never done this before.
Okay. And I know that you've called in the learned architect here, and I know you had the contractor that ran out on you. Have you secured or gotten bids or quotations for, from new contractors on how much this project would cost?
No, not yet. I haven't moved forward like that yet. I, I'm really hoping that if just go forward, then I can go and deal with some better companies and more reliable contracts, contractors to come in and do bidding work and all that and everything. But I haven't done none of that yet. I don't know what's going to happen. I'm like stuck in a situation.
Okay. Architect, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Ms.?
Brenda Parker.
Okay, Ms. Parker, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. And I know that you were mentioning that the auditor's site, that this is indicated that the, you said there was indicia that the carriage house was habitable?
Yes.
Unpack that for me a little bit about what that would look like on that particular documentation.
So, I, I submitted it to the city, what I found. So, it, it indicated kind of dwelling number one and the spaces that were in it, and then dwelling number two and the spaces that were in, in it.
Okay. Did, did the, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Was there a separate address on the second dwelling on the auditor's site?
There was not a separate address, no.
Okay.
No. Yeah, who knows? You know, back in the day, whenever this was done, everything was different.
It does have a separate address now.
No, correct.
It does not. No, we can't get a separate address until we get the, these variances approved.
It is listed, though, as a two-family dwelling on a platted lot. So, it has the single-family home in the front and then the, what would be constituted the carriage house in the back. So, on the auditor's website, it says land use, 520, two-family dwelling on platted lot.
And then, so, if, if for some reason, in the most ideal situation, you can have this, you can have the carriage house and your daughter could live there. If that was not an option for you, would you still want to be in the property or no?
I don't know. I don't know. It would take me time to think what's my best option for me and my family. I couldn't just say yeah or no right now. I don't, I really don't know. I had to sit and think. But what happens if I can't do it? Do I have to tear it down? Do I have to, do I have to make it this? Do I have to? I don't, I don't know. I have to like weigh my options.
Are you going to ask that question?
Sorry, I can't answer that right.
Councilmember Weiss.
Chair, to that point, I guess this is probably for the department. What does happen if this variance is not approved?
Mr. Dietrich.
Are you asking about the variances for the carriage house?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not approved, I would imagine they'd have to do some sort of remediation or board up the structure. They basically can't use it as a dwelling unit, so.
But can they go back through the permitting process and start it anew?
No. I mean, they would be limited to the dwelling unit they have a record of, that we have a record of on their property. They could file for a new council variance or start that process over again if that's what they choose.
But the city ultimately wouldn't require them to tear the structure down?
I'm, I'm actually not sure. There, it's, you know, they can't use it as a dwelling unit. I guess they could continue using it as a garage, but it may need additional variances, possibly from the Board of Zoning Adjustment because of the height and that sort of thing. So, there could be a, a different path for using it as a garage.
So, then, in that, in that scenario, I'm sorry, Chair, in that scenario, then the structure would still remain? And let's say we get the variances then for the use for the garage, but then the structure still remains, which if the concern is the proximity to the alley, even though it's in the previous footprint, you're not really remedying that challenge if you use it as a garage, right?
I guess I'm not sure what your question is.
I don't know. I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. It seems as if we have an existing, you know, kind of footprint that we're working in here. It seems as if the only alternative would be then to tear the structure down, which that just doesn't, that doesn't make sense in my brain. I'm going to be completely honest.
Councilmember Remy has a question for Director Messer.
Well, I'd just like you to weigh in on, you know, like what the possible remedies are if we weren't to move forward.
Yeah, so, the, there is an existing structure. So, whether it have to be repaired, whether those remedies would have to be made, the use would not change from the existing use that we have. So, now, it would be like any other structure in the city that has an existing use. Still has to be a safe use. It still has to be a use that is repaired and put in productive use, or it could be boarded up and it could be a vacant structure. Or, as Councilmember Green mentioned, it could be torn down, which would probably be the most likely scenario based on what I know about the situation to move forward is you'd have to tear the structure down.
So, Councilmember Green.
If I might, I just am confused at how, so I used to live on Cypress, not far from this location. How is it that there, there are so many garages that back, that there are commercial properties that back that alley and almost exactly in that proximity? So, how is it that we could sort of justify making one property owner tear down a structure, and then yet the other existing structures that presumably would have the same safety issues get to remain?
Well, if, if I may, Director, just to make sure that my colleague understands, the city department has submitted approvals for this project. So, it's the position of the Department of Building and Zoning Services that this should be approved. The question remains whether council has a different opinion on that. So, sorry to answer for you, Director, but there's, the department is not advocating for, for any of that at, at this moment, just to be very clear.
And, and Ms. Parker, what remedies would, excuse me, now I'm speaking structurally, not code or anything like that. What remedies would have to be made inside the garage for it to be two cars?
It's already designed to, I mean, in this rendition, it's designed to be two cars. We just, we just have to cut another opening and put a header in.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's just kind of cutting a hole in the wall and putting a proper structural header in.
And is the rest of the framing inside of it complete or is that in process?
Yeah, most of the framing inside is complete.
Okay. How, how close to completion is it?
How close to where?
Completion. Is the carriage house, would you say?
It's fully framed and it has a roof.
That's what I mean.
So, it's a shell.
Okay.
Oh, it has windows. It just doesn't have siding. And it's just studs on the inside. But the concrete slab is in place.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for my colleagues or not, but what we are all struggling with, or what I'm struggling with, is this tension between allowing for a use of something that I think many of us on council strongly support. We support accessory dwelling units. We want to have more housing. We, we see this as a, as a density and, and add addition to the community. And so, that's on one side. The other side, though, is that we have permitting processes. And if we approve this tonight, we could be giving a nod out there that if you just go out and do the thing, and it kind of feels like it's in line with council, what council may like, then err on, on the side of that and just go do it. And that's, that, I think that that is, that is the, the true struggle that I'm having as an individual vote here, really wanting to- Really wanting to find a way to yes. My, I, the question that Councilmember Weisch was asking really was, is important to me. What happens if we say, no, can't we just open this back up and start the process again so that it couldn't, can get the proper variances through a, a new process? I know that would be a hassle, but it, but it would also be something that I could defend in terms of, of process. And so I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, what is the, that is not an option. Is that, that's not an option.
Yeah, and I, I just want to add to that too. And, uh, uh, again, you know, projects can be hard, whether you're doing a kitchen or a bathroom or anything like that. And through some of my questioning, both to the architect and to the applicant, is, you know, I was looking for, you know, and given that it's been, you know, a couple of months, a little bit more of a, okay, if you grant these variances, here is our plan to be able to execute and get this project done. And so I'm a little hesitant and uncertain with your, with your uncertainty that you have a plan to, you know, to get this done.
So I'll, I'll speak a little bit to President Harden. The only reason I could see pulling the yes vote is only because it was already a carriage house before. To have to tear it down and start over with the proper location, that is a financial hardship. I imagine it probably just ends up selling the property and takes the big loss.
Well, Ms. Parker, if I can ask a couple of follow-up questions about that. So one, so you've mentioned that it's listed on the auditor's websites. Mr. Hugard, when did you become aware that it was listed on the auditor's website that way?
You said, come aware of when?
After the, the hearing in February.
Okay, so when you purchased this property, what research did you do about whether or not that was or was not a carriage house?
When I bought it, I just, I seen it out there. I didn't, I didn't go into the researching and all that because I, I don't, I'm not a contractor.
Sure, sure. And like, I completely understand that answer. And again, this is sort of a strange situation because we're asking sort of like legal questions. And you, you know, strike me as a, as a man who's, hey, I was trying to, trying to start this process and maybe did not have, particularly because you shared the example of, hey, I hired somebody, they took off me. You have Ms. Parker who has a great reputation with this body and certainly within the community. But you did not take, you know, we have zoning districts for a reason that set into place what folks can and can't do within them. And if you want to do something that you can't do in one of them, that's why this variance process exists and you have to justify that with evidence. But again, one of the things that, to Council President's point that I'm struggling here with a little bit is that certainly we, we approve carriage houses on a fairly regular basis, but they, they follow a fairly strict process that, that we, we have. And, you know, we passed legislation earlier tonight around sort of changing some of our processes to be more open. But, you know, the idea that we're relying upon a piece of evidence from the auditor, the auditor's office that, you know, you as an applicant learned after the fact and not say, if you were to come to say to me and say, hey, I bought this and I relied upon the auditor's office saying that this was in fact a dwelling unit, a carriage house, I could say, you know, Mr. Hugard, I get it. Like, you know, that is in fact a hardship that makes a lot of sense to me here. You know, in this instance, when we're sort of thinking about the evidence that had been presented to council about what is actually contributing towards, you know, sort of checking that legal box in a hardship, you know, I, I unfortunately sort of set that auditor's office, you know, information a little bit aside because that's not something that you relied upon when you bought the property. From what you just said, it sounds like there wasn't a lot of research done other than, you know, just with your eyeballs of saying, hey, that, that sort of looks like a place that folks, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Just in, in the many years that I have been engaged in specifically dealing with zoning issues in Franklinton and the West Side. I mean, Franklinton is the oldest part of our city, and there's all kinds of wacky zoning things and things that were grandfathered in all over the place. The, the number of times that we have had to approve council variances or rezoning for single-family homes that were technically zoned commercial well after the construction was done and everything was closed out and the sale of a home was about ready to happen, I couldn't even count on my, on my hands. And so to think that, you know, you know, for me, it's like, I, in this part of town, this type of, you know, carriage house or converted garage was so, so common in Franklinton. And I imagine it was well before there was ever a zoning, a zoning code that we, like what we have now to accommodate it or require it to go through these processes. I'm not speaking in this case. I am speaking in generalities, but I'm just, I just am saying this is not uncommon and it's confusing. And, you know, not everyone that comes before us is, you know, can afford a rich lawyer or developer, you know, whoever it might be. You know, some people are just trying to figure it out.
Uh, any other questions for the applicant or representative right now? So again, we're going to make sure we invite you back up. So we got a couple of public speakers. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Remy.
No, no problem. You purchased it from Legacy Homes, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know exactly. It's been three and a half years. I forgot who I bought it from.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at the transfers on it. And looked like it sold in Jan, you know, from one LLC to another, from January to February '22. You bought it March 9th in '22. When, uh, it was not on the market then, so, meaning that it wasn't in the MLS. So it wasn't brokered by a real estate agent. But my question is, what they represented again back in '22, what did Legacy Homes say at that time to you about, about that property and about what, what that was in the back?
Really, they didn't say nothing. A buddy of mine bought a house down the street and he like hooked me up with this guy. There's, there's a house down the street, so.
Get a little bit closer to the mic too, please.
A buddy of mine bought a house up the street, on the same street. And he told me he bought it from the people and they got a house down the street. So I was like, all right, I'll look at it. You know what I mean? And I looked at it and I was like, started making plans with the family, like, oh, it's right by Jalen's school. We grew up down here. So when I bought it from him, they didn't say nothing. They just were the money.
But, but again, you, you saw a property. I mean, I, I see the exist-
Yeah, I saw beat up property with bullet holes in it and people wasn't wanting to leave. I had to go down and bribe people to leave because every time they called the police, one of them, they'd come back. I mean, I cleaned the house up. It was, it was a wreck.
And to Councilmember Beatty's point, what, what would come next? If we were to approve this today, what would come next? What would you do? Uh, you know, obviously they're just, you know, they're not cited.
Submit the plans with the city and I will make sure everything's permitted. If they said they want 115 nails, I give them 116 nails. I'll do it the way it's supposed to be done. I don't want to beat no corners to have my daughter living in something unsafe. I don't want to beat no corners or nothing. It's just been a three and a half year process. It's like a stress on my brain, you know what I mean? I would just, I would like to finish it. I mean, I will figure it out. I sold my truck to keep my budget right, you know what I mean, everything? So, I mean, I'm still ready for the project.
And Director, you, you guys are, just say they're in favor of the Buildings and Zoning Services. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Messer, I wanted to ask you a follow-up question that's generated by some of this. So obviously, as we've heard, one of the, one of the issues here is that the applicant did not get permits for the structure, which again, the request is to allow this to be utilized as a carriage house. If in fact, the applicant would have come to BZS to seek out permits to perform work on that, would that applicant have learned that they, that that was not in fact a allowable use? And your department informed them that such, which would have probably prevented many of these things from getting as far as they did?
That is correct, Councilmember. Essentially, as we have talked about a lot, you have the zoning process and you have the building process. Building permits, though, would all have to go through a zoning clearance, a zoning approval. So if they would have applied for a, a structural building permit to build a carriage house, a livable residence, zoning would have flagged that to say that that is not a permissible use as the property currently sits, which is why we're here tonight. That essentially, even though we're okay with the structural modifications that have been proposed with the architect and the review, it's the use that's really representing a problem.
Thank you. And Mr. Shin from the City Attorney's Office, so I know you know some general things about this case, but again, just to ask sort of a general variance question, when we're talking about the use variance, which again, is in fact the first thing that we're considering, that question of hardship is more dictated by the actual parcel itself than the intention of the applicant, correct? So when we talk about, just because you want to do something on it, does not make it a hardship because the code does not allow you to do that.
You're correct, Chair Dorrance, that the code isn't contemplating a hardship created by the applicant themselves.
Which, again, we may be terribly sympathetic to that hardship based upon maybe that, that applicant not understanding what they've sort of gotten themselves into. But again, the code itself is not reactive to that sympathy of, hey, this, this applicant may have not known what they should have known when it relates to, again, a question of hardship as it relates to the use. Again, is that, that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So as I said, we do have two, unless there's other question or comments from colleagues.
Hold on, Mr. Shin, Council Shin, what would an example of a hardship be, just for putting that in context in this situation?
Just, yes, sir. Councilmember Beatty, a hardship example for this kind of variance, trying to find my notes here. Forgive me one second. So a hardship would be something that would impact its, its use that is based on the circumstances of the area, not something that the applicant has brought forth. And in, in this case, you know, there was an existing way it was, and then the applicant's actions have made it actually even worse in terms of its non-conformance with the existing zoning requirements. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we do have two public speakers assigned to speak against this ordinance. First, we have Mr. Jack Chambers, who is the Chair of the Franklin's Area Commission. Mr. Chambers, welcome back to council. I'll swear you in real quick when you get to the podium. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, that you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? Please, if so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, sir.
First off, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Committee. I don't want, I don't want my chair to get mad at me. Second off, Councilmember Beatty, an example of hardship for this property would be, for example, the fact that it's actually 30 feet wide, not 50 feet wide. And so there's nothing that they can do to change that. It is what it is and they can't change that. That's an existing hardship that they can't change no matter what. You know, just to follow up on the last time I spoke, Councilmember Green asked me about carriage houses. I've got three in committee right now and they're very favorable because they were done the right way. You guys all brought up basically all of my talking points, including the fact that it is still on the market. It does claim to be an investment property, you know, to flip. It was sold for $130,000. Don't know how much you can take a loss on with demolishing it. We'll approve the demolish to make it right. Our concerns are still, you know, addressed in regards to what we see problems with this property. The parking is incredibly difficult to get in and out of. We see a very big fire risk. And they actually call that out in their hardship as an impact to the government services. It says the only negative component is the proximity to the sidelines and not having adequate firefighter access. Fires are a big problem in Franklinton. And I don't think that putting two cars underneath a living space makes it acceptable. You know, I don't want to go over everything that I spoke last time about. The biggest thing I want to say is I really urge you guys to think about the rules of zoning and following procedure. I am constantly dealing with bad actors, and I'm not calling this applicant a bad actor, bad actors trying to sell properties claiming zoning without actually having it, building properties without actually happening. If we continue to let this happen, it will just continue to accelerate and we won't be able to keep track of it. And that's how things get grandfathered in improperly.
Questions from council members for the Chair of the Zoning Committee of the Franklin's Area Commission. CNN, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. The next speaker we come, have before council is Ms. Tina Cooper. Ms. Cooper, welcome back to council. Again, I'll swear you in when you get up to the podium. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, that you shall answer under pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
My name is Tina Cooper. I've been a resident of Franklinton for over 60 years. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak before you. First of all, this property, a few years ago, many, many years ago, I came down to City Council and spoke before City Council because the owner was wanting to change the unit into a two-unit as it was only listed as a one-unit. That was voted down to be changed to a two-unit. So how it was ever changed to a two-unit, I've been in my residence for over 40 years. I have no idea because I was never notified of it. This is regards to 41 South Cypress Avenue, 2170-2024. This property is currently listed to Realtor.com for sale. Under the property details, it is listed as a main home and a newly rebuilt carriage house. It also has listed a two-car garage, which does not exist at this time. The space between this property and the property to the north does not have enough clearance to allow for trash or recycle bins to be taken on or brought back inside the property. The initial permit did not include the tear down or rebuild of the garage for the new structure. This property has been an eyesore, no siding, weeds overgrown, even after notice from the city that this was posted on the front door. They would introduce a minimum of four additional parking. The parking is difficult at times, especially when you have the Bottoms Up Cafe down there on the corner. I would like the variance to not be approved. The Franklinton Zoning Committee and Area Commission voted against a variance to have the carriage house demolished.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Any questions from my colleagues for the public speaker? CNN, thank you, Ms. Cooper. I appreciate you being here. I do want to invite the applicant and the representative back to the podium if there's any additional comments that they'd like to make, either from rebuttal or anything generally they'd like to share.
As far as the fire codes and spacing, there's, there's pictures that we submitted that our dwelling, my dwelling sits right here behind the telephone pole. There's a house next door, which their fence is out further in the alley. The big garbage trucks and all that run up and down that alley. Now, there's room for parking. That would probably just be our problem. As far as fire codes, there's nothing on either side. And I know if approved, we'd have to put firewalls up because that neighborhood, a lot of their houses are all close together where you could barely walk them. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, I think it's, it's what Mr. Hugard indicated before, we're stuck. So your decision, whether it's good or bad, will help move forward with what needs to happen for the property.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I appreciate that, that comment. I, I know council and you all and the applicant have been going back and forth since we met in February. And I know one of the reasons we're here tonight is like, I know you all need an answer. And as the department mentioned, certainly the applicant, whether or not this is passed or not passed, if it's not, could certainly file a future council variance based upon a hardship that may have not been articulated here, or this body may see that information differently down the line. But again, to be clear, from my understanding from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, if in fact we were to not pass this variance, and Director Messer, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but there would not be a prescribed, this must be torn down tomorrow. There are things that certainly would need to happen from their standpoint, and certainly nothing that would prevent an applicant from, in the future, making a different hardship argument on a council variance, just, just to make that very, very clear. Are there any other questions? Councilor Green?
Yeah, sorry. Just, just one more clarifying question. Did you, you said you purchased the property from, from a person who was already doing work on it, who had already invested in it. Is that right? You bought it from someone who was?
No. I had a friend who had bought a property. I had a friend who had bought a property down the street.
Yeah.
The same people he bought from. He said, there's what I was looking for down there, and he moved his daughter in. So I went down and looked at it, thought about it, and I was like, all right, I purchased it. I really don't even remember who I purchased it from.
Okay. But there wasn't another investor that was working on it with you, or no?
No, no, there's none of that working on it. I was the only one doing anything myself. I took out, I mean, it's nobody's problem, but I took out loans to buy it, and I used my savings to fix it up.
Okay.
Any other questions from council members to the applicant and the representative? See none, thank you. This, again, is, I think, in my two-plus years as Chair of this committee, I think one of the most unusual council variances that we have had, some of which is, I think, based upon some of our processes that exist that folks may not be familiar with. Certainly, the folks moving through these processes from a council variance standpoint, you know, sometimes there's difficult things to confront, and ultimately, this is a legal question, not necessarily just one in which a sympathetic applicant, no matter how sympathetic they may be, actually gets us beyond what the legal standard is, in my opinion. There's a number of different motions that I'll be making here. I will try to make very, very clear with my council colleagues what those are, so if folks want to vote yes or no based upon them. If you have questions about what you're voting on, considering this is, again, one of the most unique applicants, applications that we have had, I just want to make sure that council members are fully aware of what is in front of them. Councilmember? Rosita Pedia?
That's me, thanks.
Yeah.
So I'm clear, as you go down, would there be, would this be a yes/no depending on, or would, in order for the passage, would it be yes all the way down? I'm just, I know you're going to break it down, but I'm just trying to understand as we go in.
Sure. So just to be very, very clear, council member, so the first motion I'll be making is one that will be accepting the Area Commission report as an exhibit. That is not instructive of whether or not a variance is granted or not granted. That's merely accepting that report into evidence. I next plan to adopt some findings of fact for council based upon what has been presented back in February, what has been shared with council since, and what has been presented here tonight. Those findings of facts, again, do not bind someone ultimately to vote for or against the variance. They're just the findings of facts that I have produced based upon the information that's been shared, and certainly what I believe is the best version of the evidence that we have. We'll then have additional motions that will go through. At that point, there will be, I would ask members to be very, very clear on their votes. Again, since we're in an open meeting, you can say, I would like to vote a certain way that would be, that would either grant or go against the variance. We'll try to make sure that that is clear. So at that point, it will be a question, once we get past the first couple of motions, if you support the variance, you will want to vote against. If you want to be, vote, I'm sorry, if you are planning to vote against the variance, you would want to vote in the affirmative on those next two, and then the last one would actually be to vote down. And very, very clear, we do not consider the use, the other variances until we consider the use variance. That is first. We don't get to any of the maneuvering or parking or anything like that. Those are things that would not come before us at this point, since we have not approved the variance. I do want to pause. This is complicated, and if council members have things that they would like to say regarding this application at this point.
Yeah, could you just, once again, for this, the legal standard for the use variance, is that where the hardship is?
Correct.
Okay.
And that hardship, again, is regarding some uniqueness of the property that prevents the requested use to be done. And as Mr. Chambers mentioned, that's typically some type of physical issue, whether or not that's the size of the property, the particular contours of it, some aspect of it, not necessarily actions that have been taken by an applicant that have given rise to a hardship, or simply, I would want to do this. That is not necessarily something that would necessarily meet that kind of legal standard.
So we could potentially approve the use of this parcel and then continue to express concerns about, you know, in later variances about the maneuverability, or...
We, if in fact, now, this is, again, terribly unique because it's not a proposal that is before us. Typically, when these things come before us, there's not a stick in the ground. In this instance, it's even more unique because, again, the variances that are being requested here are actually ones that they absolutely have to have because the structure has been built at this point from a physical standpoint externally. Now, certainly, things like parking and other things could be, in fact, sort of dealt with, I think, differently, but just a, it is very, very difficult to consider those individual code variances because, again, it's not as if something that, if we were to say, well, this maneuvering variance should not be granted, and they could go back to the drawing board and figure it out. There's no necessarily drawing board to go back for the applicant at this point.
So, just to clarify, so once the use variance is questioned, is opened up because of a change of use, that triggers that the additional particular parking setback, whatever variance is, so there's no grandfathering because the use change has been requested?
Correct. If we deny the use variance, then we will not consider the other variances that are part of the application.
Okay, let's go.
Comments or questions from council members?
I'm just going to make a comment. I think that, to me, you have a family who grew up in Franklinton, who wants to move back to Franklinton, that acquired a property that had what looked like an existing carriage house on it. You can look at the auditor's website, it says carriage house. I know, we know, sitting up here, that the zoning in the city of Columbus and what the auditor has it listed as aren't always the same, but the average person probably doesn't understand some of that nuance. Built a structure on the existing concrete pad, and it shares the same frontage or, you know, amount of space in between the back alley as many other parcels along this street that I used to live on. The Franklinton Area Commission Zoning Chair talked a lot about procedure. In the conversations I had with members of the Area Commission, they also were like, well, a little confused about whether or not they even could approve it because it was built out of conformance with the permitting process, and so there were procedural challenges that caused confusion. We see people accidentally working without permits or intentionally working without permits all the time, but it happens pretty commonly here, especially if you're not from town or you've never done this type of work before. And so for that reason, I believe that there have been significant hardships, and I'm going to be voting yes on this.
Any other council members like to make any comments? Councilmember Rosita Pedia?
Yes, I think where I struggle is the humanity of it all, because I understand the legality of what we're talking about, I think, to the point that Councilmember Green was saying. And one thing I would say to our applicant is, I think at some point, it sounds as if you do need support or you need guidance, right? It's great that you have an architect who's here, and you said it best when you said, we just need to figure out what we're doing with this property so you can decide. But, you know, I think staying paralyzed is just costing you more money, you know, and I think deciding at some point, either you're going to cut your losses and sell it, or you're going to keep it and continue to invest in it, because I think that is also part of the challenge when we're talking about all of the things before us, right? Because I think the, I'm not sure if the indecisiveness leads to lack of credibility. I think part of it just leads to, you know, you got yourself in over your head on something, on a project, and didn't realize all of the steps. But at some point, when you realize that something wasn't working, then that's, I think, the point where I would hope, moving forward, you do get an accredited contractor, you do get folks who can then help you along with this process, because, you know, Councilmember Green, I agree with you about the continued financial hardships, but, I mean, that, in the long run, I have to believe is going to save you because you're going to be able to do things right, right? And so I think that's at least what I think happened in this particular situation, and so that is where, you know, I'm struggling because I think we're making good points and that we want to ensure that people are doing things the right way so that we can take into account safety and other things, because we do have historic neighborhoods that have things, I think about the German villages, I think about other places, that, you know, structures are already there, you don't want to take away what is there for folks, and we want to meet people where they are. And I think that's where I struggle in this particular situation because we're trying to balance both, right? We're trying to balance ensuring that people do things the right way with ensuring that in this particular instance, if we didn't, at some point, though, we want to make sure that you are moving in the right direction, right? So that that way, you are being both a good neighbor, but then also, you know, securing things for yourself and your family, which is where, again, I find the struggle and the tension. And so I'm inclined to say yes, because I think we've already, you've invested in this structure, which is, to you, your point, Council President, something that we want to continue to see. My hope, though, is that however this turns out, I think you just need to decide and then move forward in your decision, but then make sure that you have, and I feel like someone's mom's saying that, and I hope you don't take it that way, but I just hope that you, you know, get the help that you need so that that way you can make the best decisions, you know, for your family and not be able to move forward so that, again, we can figure out what to do with this property moving forward, so.
Thank you. Any other members? So to my colleagues and certainly to the applicant, again, not to belabor the point, you know, I feel terribly sympathetic to the situation that the individual is in. However, again, the legal standard, when we talk about what is, in fact, a hardship, nothing that is either in the record, in my opinion, or that has been shared here, actually checks that legal box. And that does not mean that I don't feel bad for the situation that this individual is in, but ultimately, we're talking about a growing city that, again, does need to have processes in place to ensure that development long-term actually complies to our standards that we have adopted. I think it's important for this body to remain consistent. Reason minds can certainly disagree, but that ultimately is where my vote will be here tonight. And again, as I mentioned, I'll be very, very clear with members as we go through the different motions that I'll be making. So the first motion is, again, not dispositive on whether or not the variance is granted. That is, I first move to accept the application of the Area Commission report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dornz, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Adopted.
And just to be very clear, council members, I will call the vote by voice when it is dispositive on the variance, just to make it a little bit easier for everyone. So next, I move to adopt the following, is the factual findings of council. The parcel is located in the District Zone R2F, which pursuant to 3332.037, the Columbus City Codes allow a one-single or two-unit dwelling on a lot. When the applicant acquired the property, there was a secondary structure already in existence in the parcel, but the city lacks a record to support the original use of the structure. Further, the existing structure was torn down prior to the city's review. The city cannot confirm whether it was or was not a use as a dwelling previously. Applicant commenced construction on the renovation on the structure without obtaining necessary permits, without seeking necessary variances from the city. While the new structure maintains the original structure's footprint, the renovation has added a full second-story dwelling unit, resulting in greater overall square footage. Additionally, the existing gabled roof was replaced with a flat roof. Upon discovering that the construction had occurred without the necessary city approval, the city issued a stop-work order, and the applicant submitted a post-construction request for variance. In addition to the evidence we heard tonight, while there is, on the auditor's records, that this has been identified as a additional dwelling unit, the applicant was not aware of that information prior to moving forward with this project. As of the issue of undue hardship, the applicant provided the following in the application. Quote, "There is an existing dwelling unit on the site. We are proposing to build a one-car garage house at the rear of the property. With the addition of the new carriage house, occupy less than 50% of the property, the investment of this home will be an asset to the neighborhood. Since the owner purchased the property with a carriage house in place and was planning on having his college-age daughter live there so she could have independence without paying rent, losing the opportunity to maintain that carriage house will be a huge loss to the owners of the property and would be a detriment to the property and result in major loss of value to the property." At the hearing, the applicant provided the following additional testimony in support of his argument for undue hardship. The applicant provided the testimony that the secondary structure was to be used as a dwelling unit for his daughter, now, not as a rental unit. Applicant submitted that the structure was likely permitted nonconforming use and was only being replaced by the walls and creating a larger habitable dwelling unit above the garage that was used for a variance request. Applicant also stated that they had roughly spent $40,000 to $60,000 in renovation costs on the structure for that project. So I move, sorry? I move to adopt those factual findings as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dornz, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Next, based on the information provided both in the exhibits and during these two hearings, I move for council to adopt the following preliminary findings. There is no evidence to suggest the intended use will impair inadequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property. There's been no evidence to suggest that the intended use will unreasonably increase the congestion of public streets. There's been no evidence to suggest the intended use will increase the danger of fires or otherwise endanger public safety. There's been no evidence to suggest that the intended use will unreasonably diminish or impair property values within the surrounding council, and there has been no evidence to suggest the intended use will, in any other respect, impair public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. Again, I move for council to adopt those preliminary findings.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dornz, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Adopted.
And I will be asking for a voice vote on... I'm sorry, no, I will not be asking for a voice vote on this. Actually, no, I will be asking for a voice vote. Thanks for sticking with me, everybody. This is quite the night. So moving to the consideration of undue hardship based upon the information provided both in the exhibits and during the hearing, I move for council to adopt the following findings. To obtain a use variance, an applicant must demonstrate undue hardship. In this case, the applicant has failed to show that such a use will not adversely affect the surrounding property or surrounding neighborhoods. Further, the applicant has failed to demonstrate undue hardship that, at the time the property was acquired, the zoning district in which the parcel is located did not allow for a second dwelling unit, but the applicant chose to increase the nonconformity, which may have been a nonconforming use by proceeding to construction, seeking a variance to do so as required by the Columbus City Codes. To the extent that he may now suffer financial hardship, that hardship is occasioned by his own actions rather than any particularities associated with the parcel itself. There's also initial failure to seek necessary permits prior to the construction. Had the applicant done so, the need to obtain a use variance would have been made known to the applicant prior to increasing the nonconformity. Further, the evidence submitted by the applicant at the initial hearing date in February, as well as submission writing to staff, stated that he would experience undue hardship as the property generally was to be a family home, and the structures in particular was intended to be a dwelling space to the applicant's daughter, but those statements are in conflict with the property also being directly held out for sale. It is difficult to determine the actual final utilization of the property at this point. This conflict raises credibility issues as to the intended use of the property, and also it makes it very, very difficult for us as a body to make a final determination of the credibility towards the actual intended use of this variance. To make very clear, I will be voting in favor of this ordinance, or of, to adopt, to, I will be moving to adopt the following findings. I will be voting in favor of that. If you are planning to support the variance, there is information in this that you may take issue with. So I'll be calling for a voice vote. I will be voting in favor of, to adopt these following findings. Again, once you flag for council members, if you disagree with anything that I just read, then I would suggest that you vote no. So at this point, I move to adopt the finding, to adopt those findings of council by voice.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Barrosa De Padilla?
No.
Beatty?
Yes.
De Akauer?
Yes.
Dornz?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Remy?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, we then moved for passage for the use variance. Again, I will be now voting no on this use variance. If you support the applicant's request, I would encourage you to vote yes.
We've caught on.
I now, I now move for passage by voice.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Barrosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
No.
De Akauer?
No.
Dornz?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Remy? Weiss? President Harden?
No.
Motion has been defeated, so I now make a motion dismiss the remaining area variances and refer them back to the department due to the fact the use variance motion has failed, and council no longer has authority to prove the remaining area variances contained in this ordinance according to Columbus City Code, section 33.071, 3307... in this ordinance according to Columbus City Code, section 33.071, 3307.10A. By voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
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 Beatty?
That would be yes.
De Akauer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Weiss? President Harden?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to ordinance 1459-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.033, R2 Residential District, 3312.49, required parking, 3332.112, R2 Area Disrequirements, 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27, rear yard, the Columbus City Codes for property located at 3041 Warrington Drive, to allow a two-single-unit dwelling in one lot with used development standards in the R2 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling and detached garage. The requested council variance will allow the detached garage to be converted into accessory dwelling unit. A council variance is required because the current zoning district only allows one single-unit dwelling per lot. The proposal is approved from city staff and the North Central Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 1476-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.037, R2 Residential District, 3312.49, required parking, 3321.05B2, vision clearance, 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, 3332.14, R2 Area Disrequirements, 3332.21, building lines, 3332.25, max side yard required, 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted, and 332.27, rear yard, the Columbus City Codes for property located at 323 Stewart Avenue, to allow three-unit and two-unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the R2 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a three-unit dwelling and two-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will conform the existing development pending a lot split, allowing for each dwelling to be located on its own lot. A council variance is required because the current zoning district only allows one single or two, or one two-unit dwelling in one lot, but does not allow a three-unit dwelling. Proposals has approvals from city staff and the Columbus Soundside Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as, as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 1486-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.19, fronting the Columbus City Codes for property located at 744 Cabbage Road, to allow a two-unit dwelling not, to not front public streets in the R1 Residential District. This is a companion variance to the rezoning we considered earlier tonight on our agenda. Site consists of portions of two parcels which are developed with single-unit dwellings, and the requested council variance will allow the existing single-unit dwellings and one additional lot in sub-area B that do not conform, do not front public streets. A council variance is necessary because the new lots will be created in the R1 District that do not front upon a public street, and with one lot for the existing dwelling, and one lot for the sub-area B, and one lot for the existing dwelling in sub-area C. Proposals approved from city staff. There is no area commission or civic association that I mentioned earlier. I believe, we, again, we did have a public speaker that withdrew their ordinance, their speaker slip on this. I do not believe our other public speaker that spoke on the rezoning is still with us here tonight. I do want to offer the floor to the applicant's representative, if you want to add anything that's specific to the variances or comments from earlier covering the variance situation essentially as well. Do colleagues have any questions for the applicant's representative this time? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. I next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And next I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
As amended.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1488-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.035, R3 Residential District, 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1351 Kent Street, to allow a three-unit dwelling with reduced lot within the R3 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow for an existing dwelling to be converted into a three-unit dwelling. A council variance is necessary because the three-unit dwelling is restricted use in that zoning district. The request also includes variances to reduce the lot width requirements from 50 feet to the existing 40. Proposal is approved from city staff and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1491-2025, to granted variance provision section 3361.02, permitted use of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 3570 Fisher Boulevard, to allow a screen printing business in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a commercial building, and the requested council variance will allow a screen printing business, which is considered a manufactured use in an existing commercial building. A council variance is required because the business is not allowable use in that district. Proposal is approved from city staff and the West Sido Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
I move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Now adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance 1492-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.035, R3 Residential District, 3312.49, required parking, 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, 3332.13, R3 District Requirements, the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1469-1471 Bryden Road, to allow a three-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The site consists of one parcel developed with a two-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow its conversion into a three-unit dwelling with no structural changes proposed. The request also includes a variance requiring parking, lot width, and lot area. Site also is within the Bryden Road Historic District, which is subject to review and issuance of a certificate of appropriance by the Historic Resources Commission for any applicable exterior modifications of the property. Proposal approved from city staff, Near East Area Commission, and Historic Resource Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as, as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt staff findings as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. I move to amend to submitted to clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance 1493-2025, to granted variance provision section 3332.38H, private garages, 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, 3332.25, max side yards required, and 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.38G, private garage, the Columbus City Codes for property located at 764 South Sixth Street, to allow a habitable space above attached garage with reduced development standards in the R2 Residential District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling and attached garage, and the requested council variance will allow the existing detached garage to be used with a habitable space located on the second floor. A council variance is necessary because habitable space above a garage is only allowed when connected directly to habitable spaces within a dwelling. The request also includes variances of lot width, reduced maximum side yards for the existing dwelling, increased garage height. The proposal is approved from city staff and the German Village Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the findings of staffs, the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have for tonight's zoning agenda.
Seeing no further business coming for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row, please.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
We are reconvening meeting number 30. The next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Tonight on our Health, and our Health, Human Services and Equity Committee, we have one ordinance on second reading, ordinance 1193-2025, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept and appropriate a grant from the Ohio Department of Aging in the amount of $24,535 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging in connection with the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program and to declare an emergency. The Senior Farmers Market Funds are USDA federal funds granted through the Ohio Department of Aging, COAA contracts these funds, and partners with Life Care Alliance each year to administer the program in seven of our eight counties. The Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program allows low-income seniors in Central Ohio to obtain in-season produce from registered local farmers selling at markets in the counties. This program will provide vouchers for seniors to redeem with local organized markets, including the North Market in various Central Ohio counties. Approximately 5,100 individuals are expected to receive vouchers. Emergency action is requested so that the program can be implemented in accordance with grant conditions. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? First, I request to amend submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
And now I move for passage.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Thanks, Council President. That's all for me tonight.
Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy, Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have four ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first is 1308-2025, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into contract with 100 Public Safety, Inc., doing business as Performance Protocol for Training Services for the Division of Police's Field Training Officers to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the Police Continuing Professional Training Fund. The original contract was a result of initial work with All-Star Talent, the vendor that is assisting with recruitment and training of police officers following the receipt of the $1 million grant from the state of Ohio to improve the recruitment and retention of law enforcement officers. Deputy Director Wenzel, could you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding?
Councilmember Remy, yes, I can. As you mentioned, we're wrapping up our grant-funded contract with All-Star Recruitment, and Performance Protocol was a subcontractor under that contract. They provided some training to public safety staff. We were really impressed by the training that they provided, and it was very targeted to our specific needs. We need to reach other units within the Division of Police with field training officer training, and we really need for that training to be consistent and uniform. So we're asking to waive bidding and enter into a contract with Performance Protocol.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, at 1425-2025, to authorize the city attorney on behalf of the Department of Public Safety to modify the contract for special legal counsel services with TAF, Stetness, and Hollister LLP to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $176,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This is a second modification on this contract entered into with TAF and Hollister on September 21st, 2021. Deputy Director Wenzel, could you just speak to the waiver of competitive bidding on this one?
Yes, this is an existing contract for a specific legal case, so we're asking to stay with the same council to wrap up that case and pay outstanding invoices.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, at 1445-2025, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit known as Timothy L. Carricker versus City of Columbus, Ohio et al., number 24, CV 6755, pending in the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $45,000 and zero cents in settlement to this lawsuit to authorize the transfer of $45,000 within the general fund and to declare an emergency. The case involves an accident between a Columbus Division of Fire vehicle and the plaintiff's vehicle. The plaintiff alleges both personal, physical injury and property damage to his vehicle as a result of the accident. I'd like to ask the city attorney's deputy chief of staff, Brian Shin, to provide some additional details on this proposed settlement. Could you please speak to those?
Yes, thank you, Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council. And in this instance, Mr. Carrick was driving on October 17th, 2022. He was, it was early in the morning, and he was proceeding through an intersection when the vehicle driven by the EMS officer came through the intersection, driving the wrong way down a one-way street, and had an accident that T-boned basically Mr. Carricker. Mr. Carricker was not cited. CPD investigated and, and determined that it was reasonable for him not to have anticipated that the emergency vehicle would be coming the wrong way down a one-way street, especially this time of day. So he was not cited. The lawsuit was filed in common pleas court, seeking recovery for Mr. Carricker's personal injury and his medical bills, which were approximately $25,000. Generally, we're immune when it comes to an EMS situation under 2744, but in this instance, we feel like there could be a jury question related to whether his actions rose to the standard of wanton behavior that would take us out of our immunity. So therefore, we feel like it, it's not an issue that's also would be conducive to summary judgment. So we feel like it is in the best interest of the city to settle this for $41,000, which is not a lot, excuse me, $45,000, which is not much more than his medical bills. And we believe that it, it avoids potential jury verdict for more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shin. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, at 1454-2025, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit captioned Sierra Simmons versus City of Columbus et al., United States District Court Case Number 224, CV 1550, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $210,000 and no cents in settlement of the lawsuit to authorize the transfer of $210,000 within the general fund and to declare an emergency. This case involves a claim of excessive force against our Division of Police officers on the occasion of the plaintiff's detention and arrest in 2023. So I'd, again, ask our city attorney's deputy chief of staff, Brian Shin, to weigh in on this proposed settlement.
Yes, council, Chair Remy, council president, members of council. In this instance, Columbus police officers were investigating a report of a cutting and a stabbing. At the time they were there, Ms. Simmons approached the house very rapidly and walked up the stairs. It turns out she was the sister of one of the suspects. The officers involved instructed Ms. Simmons to not enter the home because it's a crime scene. Ms. Simmons argued with them, but retreated down some of the steps, but not all of the steps. The CPD sergeant attempted to escort her further down the steps the rest of the way, but again, Ms. Simmons verbally and physically resisted when he touched her arm. Once they got off the steps, the officer decided that there was probable cause to arrest her for misconduct at an emergency and began the process of handcuffing her. Again, she resisted, so the officer performed what's known as a Level One takedown, which is the least intrusive kind of a takedown. He took her down in the grass, but unfortunately, she hit a tree root, and it and it caused a scratch, um, to her face. So, uh, he then handcuffed her, put her in the, in the cruiser, and, um, later prosecution decided to dismiss the M4 charges against Ms. Simmons for payment of court costs. She filed a lawsuit in federal district court against the officers in the city, alleging excessive force, assault, false arrest, and making, um, uh, these claims, uh, under both state and federal law. After discovery, we were concerned that a jury may, uh, find, um, with her argument of excessive force. And we know that unfortunately, with a 1983 action, that even if a plaintiff only recovers a small minor amount of damages, they always get their attorney's fees. So we believe that, um, and that she'd already incurred over $112,000 of attorney's fees. We believe it's in the best interest of the city to avoid a verdict and to avoid racking up additional attorney's fees. So that's why we request council's approval for settling the lawsuit for $210,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shin. Does, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. That is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming for council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember Floris yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, in Public Utilities and Sustainability, I have 1144-2025. To authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with John Aramone Sons for the transite pipe replacements and John Glenn Avenue Water Main Extension Project to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize the appropriation of funds in the Water Fresh Water Market Rate Program Fund to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Water Bond Fund to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan to finance the contract and to authorize the expenditure of up to $10,323,323.10 from the Water Fresh Water Market Rate Program Fund and the Water Bond Fund to pay for the project. This ordinance, uh, allows the department to finance two water main extension projects in neighborhoods across the city, including Clintonville, North London, Northeast, and Far South Side. The transite pipe replacement will replace approximately 9,065, 9,065 linear feet of existing transite or asbestos cement pipe in the water distribution system and replace it with new ductile iron water main at various locations. The John Glenn Avenue Water Main Extension will replace or extend 400 linear feet of water main. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next I have 1317-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a con- contract with Duke's Root Control Incorporated for sewer root control services for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage in 2025 to waive the competitive bidding provision of City Code and to authorize an expenditure of $150,000 from the sewer operating sanitary fund. Duke's Root Control is the only commercial applicator licensed to apply Diquate, Dibromide, a proven effective and noncarcinogenic root control treatment. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have for my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last committee to come before council is the Housing, uh, Homelessness and Building Committee. I chair that committee. I have ordinance 1390-2025 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with Sky Nile Consulting to provide communication support for the Housing for All Initiative, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes and declare an emergency. This legislation will help the city of Columbus communicate with residents, tenants, and landlords about housing resources and tenant protections. City Council has passed numerous reforms and protections under the Housing for All Package, which will help tenants as consumers and avoid unnecessary displacement or evictions. An important next step in this process is to make sure that these protections are well-understood through the community. Sky Nile will help Columbus continue to get this message out.